Good evening, everyone. All those who are in the boardroom and those who may be watching virtually like to call to order the November 14, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting. Are there any requests to speak on closed session items?
It's for item number...
C4.
C4, Employee Performance Evaluation. Title of the employee to be reviewed, Superintendent. The name is Kim Tilton. Welcome. I'll give you a 30-second warning before your time's done.
Cool. Awesome. So today... Are we in?
Thank you.
Awesome. I'm the first, okay. Kim Tilton, I work at Santa Barbara High School. Today, I want to underscore the importance of the Board establishing an evaluative process that includes the voices of those under the supervision and guidance of the superintendent. It is imperative that the Board institute mechanisms that not only ensure accountability, but also cultivate an environment that's conducive to growth and collaboration. One pivotal facet of this comprehensive process I'm hoping you'll adopt should include opportunities for us, the teachers and the administrators that work under the superintendent's direction, to provide anonymous critical feedback. This practice is not merely a formality. It's a strategic necessity for our school district. In any administration, the power dynamic between leaders and those they supervise can stifle open communication and collaboration. The fear of retribution or hesitancy to challenge authority can create an atmosphere where genuine concern goes unaddressed, leading to potential emergence of toxic working environments. Great leaders understand that critical feedback is not a signal of failure, but an invaluable source of information for improvement. They actively seek out and welcome feedback from various channels, and they appreciate it as a catalyst for growth and refinement. So tonight, I'm asking for two things. One, that the Board create a policy and a mechanism that ensures and secures spaces for employees to express their thoughts and concerns and feedback without fear of reprisal. The evaluation process, the second thing I'm asking is that the evaluation process you're considering or using for our superintendent and all administrators include analysis of critical feedback data gathered from these diverse groups of stakeholders, most notably our teachers and site administrators. This is the only way to ensure you're getting candid assessment of our administration's strengths and weaknesses. This process did exist. Why has it been abandoned? I used to have the opportunity to give feedback, not only on my site administrators, but also the superintendent himself. It was important process that Kerry Matzoukko was a proponent of and created. I argue that whatever evaluation that is being considered tonight is far from complete until data is gathered in a safe and anonymous space for the people directly impacted by our superintendent's decisions, which must include the voices of district and site administrators and teachers. This process feels closed, and it is. That leads to a lack of transparency and ultimately a lack of trust. Our superintendent serves our whole community, which our teachers are an integral part of. I do not know what part of the evaluative process that you're in, but my sincerest hope is that you will not just create, but demand space for yourselves and for our superintendent to be evaluated by those that they direct. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other speaker slips.
Thank you. So with no additional request to speak, we will adjourn to closed session to discuss items 1, 3, and 4. And following our regular session this evening, we will adjourn back to closed session to discuss item 2. We will now adjourn to closed session. Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the Santa Barbara Unified Board of Trustees meeting for November 14th. We'll have language access.
Thank you, President Simms-Moten. In order to provide language access, we will be providing Spanish interpretation through Zoom and also here in person in the boardroom, and we also have ASL interpretation on Zoom. Muy buenas tardes. Tenemos interpretación al español disponible por si alguien gusta escuchar la presentación en español. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Please lead us in the place to lead us, Superintendent.
Please rise and face the flag.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so before we start our meeting here, I just want to remind us, we want to make sure that we're clearing, making sure we have clear safety ways should we need to exit right away. So please, I need you to get out of the aisles. Don't block the doors, please. This is everybody's safety to be able to do that. Also, want to make sure that we are running a respectable meeting where we're hearing each other, so let's make sure that we're not cheering and cheering on anybody coming up. We want to make sure we're hearing everybody the time, and we'll be allowed to make sure everybody is able to do that. With regard to the sign, I want to address that it's safety issues. We don't want to have, we have to get out in a hurry. We don't want to have to move around things. We want to be able to exit very safely and quickly should we need to be able to do that. So thank you for doing that. Also, we have several speakers that want to speak tonight, so our speaking time today is 90 seconds for all sessions that will be coming up, and Mr. Escobedo will be running the speaking engagements tonight, so thank you for that. So thank you so much for being here and being a part of this process tonight. I'm going to do an announcement of a closed session item. It is closed session item C1, the closed session agenda. The Board voted unanimously to deny the appeal by the employee of parent educator one of the findings of the investigation. And the Board unanimously directs staff to analyze the report on policies and practices that can be improved, and directed staff to engage the employee and the representative to seek remedies to the situation. And that was unanimous. And all unanimous vote, Ms. Alvarez is not in the meeting today, is 4-0. Reporting out on closed session item C3, what we need was the Board voted 4-0 to terminate Kitchen Lead. The Board voted 4-0 to terminate the playground supervisor. The Board voted 4-0 to terminate the special ed parent, excuse me, parent educator one. That concludes the announcement for closed session. And now we'll turn to our student boardman report. Anastasia, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start by talking about college and career readiness, as most seniors are starting to navigate the college application process, which can definitely be complex and a stressful process. Luckily, a lot of students have been able to utilize the resources available with the college fair that took place at SM, college visits, and programs such as Avid and Peak. I also talked with Dr. Sheffield about the importance of early education of the pathways after high school and implementing resources early on, so that once students get to senior year, they aren't super confused or lost and have a direction of what path they want to take. I also wanted to recognize the Dia de los Muertos events that happens at all three of the high schools, and the importance of celebrating this holiday and tradition and continuing to share a diverse cultures across all campuses. And then, the ASBs at all three of the high schools are starting to meet again as one big group. And this is super important, as students from all the schools will be able to collaborate with each other in improving the planning of school events and how to advocate for students, especially following the conversation from the Student Advisory Council with increasing student engagement and belonging with all the school events and activities. And then, I would also like to thank the district in taking the steps to create the Respond, Recognize, and Report app, and taking that student feedback, so that students can have an easier access to reporting incidents of discrimination or harassment directly to the district. And now, I would like to dedicate time for SM Student Rep Keon Strain to speak on an important topic regarding SM that is also important for all students to hear.
Thank you so much, Board, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Keon Strain. I am the Student Board Representative for Santa Barbara High School. We've probably all heard about the recent traumatic events that occurred last week at my school. We lost one of our beloved students, Shaila Alexander. These past few years, our school's been through quite a lot, but nothing seemed to hit as quite as hard as this. When my friends and I first heard, our hearts became heavy, and the thought that something we took for granted for so long was not there anymore was kind of shocking to us. The predominant theme throughout our conversations was this deep realization that all the little things that we worry so greatly about are probably not that important in the end. What is, however, is kindness. It's so easy to get caught up in all the drama and the pressures of everyday life that we forget that we're all just human, and we all just want to be loved and cared about, and know that we're not alone. I think that one of the reasons that Shaila's passing hit so deeply for most of us is that we've probably experienced a similar event with someone close to us. My cousin passed away a few years ago in a similar way, and he hurt her family in unimaginable ways ever since. So I encourage everyone to send positive vibes to her family and support them in whatever ways possible. They opened a GoFundMe page to receive some support in this time of need. We can only imagine what they're going through right now, but we know for certain that true kindness will not hurt. As you can imagine, all of our students and staff on campus are also still feeling the effects of this, some more than others, so we've done what we can to show support. Our principal, Mr. Holdren, personally spoke to the students in each class she was in to emphasize how much he cares and supports every one of us. Our counselors have made an extra effort to be available in this time of need as well. Well, there definitely could be more that could be done to help students feel like they belong. We've already been implementing some services to help. Our counselors met with every student at the beginning of the year. A few years back, we integrated science of suicide classes into our curriculums. We also have multiple clubs on campus, such as Sources of Strength and AHA, to support students' mental health. But of course, more can be done. Some students find it difficult to find a trusted adult they can have a relationship with for all four years, as teachers find a hard time staying at the school for the whole time. At the end of the day, we want every student to feel like they're loved, supported, and cared about. Anything we can do to help this will reduce the odds of something like this happening again. So please, as you go through your day, remember to think of Shaila and how much a little kindness can do for someone.
Thank you, Keon, for sharing that message, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for that report, both of you, Anastasia and Keon. Thank you for doing that, and certainly, our hearts and prayers go out to the family of Shaila. Anytime any of our students are hurting, and certainly, if they feel that they can no longer, they have no other choices, some of the ones that they make. But it's important to know that we care, and trying to do everything that we can, and looking in our systems to make sure they know that they're cared for, and that also having a system, as people do come and go out of your lives, but we need to make sure that we have a system that captures everyone as well. So thank you for that. Next, we'll go to the student superintendent's report. I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I do want to thank Keon for his remarks. I did get a chance to see him last weekend, and I would like to start this meeting with reiterating what Keon said. We know that a loss at this age is tragic, and I want to encourage all of us to support each other, to check in with each other, to ask how we are all doing. I'd like to ask us right now to take a moment of silence in honor of Shaila. Thank you, everyone. We know that, as Keon said, a little act of kindness and compassion goes a long way. At this moment, I'd like to turn our attention to some great news, and I want to thank someone who has a lot of kindness and compassion as he comes back to leadership. I'd like to bring forward our principal for Santa Barbara High School that you approved last meeting. We are so grateful to Fred for coming out of retirement and taking on the helm at Santa Barbara High School. He's here to share a little bit about himself. He's hit the ground running. He's already given me a little bit of information about students he's meeting up with now that he met when they were in ninth grade and who are really turning a corner. So Fred, please come to the podium and tell us a little bit about how it's going for you, and thank you again for taking on Santa Barbara.
Hello? Good. Okay. Well, thank you very much for this honor. I do want to say it is a privilege and an honor to take on the position with principal at Santa Barbara High School. When I was asked, it was an easy yes, knowing the school community that I was going into, the staff that I was quite familiar with. And the school community is built up of the alumni, Santa Barbara proper, and there's a real connection there with the school. And when one says, "Once a dawn, always a dawn," that carries that generational effect, and you can feel that. So I want to say that the school has, and the community creates a very soulful experience. So those are reasons why, for me, it was an easy yes. Regarding connecting, I think it's huge as part of leadership to build relationships with your community, your staff, and your students. To be able to build a team where you have, you know, 90% of that on your side, you can really move forward and have a lot of impact. That transcends with your students and your teachers, so I'm really looking forward to that. We're beginning to build that. It seems like I've only been there for a few weeks, but actually, it's been a little longer than that now. It started mid-August. There was a special story that I shared recently with Dr. Malvinato, and I'm an analog person, so someone has sort of a little querty, one of those squared things for me. And it was for parents to, during the back-to-school night, I had said, you know, that part of the ABCs of athletics, academics, arts, belonging, and collaboration, and the handbook. I held up the handbook, that was available, and that was a part of our mission, and we were going to go forward with that. And so with that, I made the, with intention to meet some students, to figure out, you know, I wanted to get to know them on a personal level. So I spoke with our counselor, Mr. Jeff Soffron, and asked him about, is there an example out there? Is there someone out there that had some challenges and is going forward, and somehow is an example? And he named a young man, who will remain unnamed. So I met with him, and I looked at his transcript, and I showed that he had some challenges in his freshman year. And then now, he's just hitting the 4.0s, 4.5s, and really sparkling. I had asked him, you know, what happened here? I see you had some challenges your freshman year. So he responded. He'd said, "Well, I have discipline and integrity." And when he just said that, you know, it gave me a joyful laugh, you know, and I said, "Tell me more about that." And he just, as a matter of fact, and I'm sure he said it better than I'm going to explain it, he just said that, "To have the discipline to go forward on the mission you've taken and have strong moral principles." And, you know, and I'm glad he had a few more words there that I missed, and so, but it made me feel well. And then, so we spoke about it, and I was smiling the whole time, I'm sure of that. And I'd asked him, I want to get to know him better, and I asked his permission if I could see him a few more times, and he said yes. So I'm going to have a second meeting with him. And I've asked him if there's some other students that are having some challenges, would he be okay to speak with them as well? So we're going to set that up, and that's just part of just building that core. So it was part of making the experience of working with a team of people and at a school and a community that much more rewarding. So that's back to why it was an easy yes to be here and to be part of the program at Santa Barbara High School.
Thank you so much, Mr. Razo. Can we give him a nice round of applause, please? The story that Mr. Razo told is a lot of what we're talking about with the Every Child, Every Chance, Every Day, and improving the experiences of our students. As he said, one of our themes this year is our ABCs, which talks about the A's being academics, the arts and athletics, B for belonging, and C for community. So I'm going to organize my report tonight in that order. I do want to talk about academics tonight. Board members, you're getting a report on student outcomes in academics. You'll be hearing more details about that, but we are proud of all the work that's been done, and we are going to hear a little bit about elementary fall testing that has been underway. Under athletics, I did get a chance to have a rare opportunity to attend the CIF championship game between Dos Pueblos and San Marcos for the water polo playoffs. We were lucky enough as a school district to have the two remaining teams be Santa Barbara Unified. I want to thank Dos Pueblos staff for also having the game moved here instead of in Irvine, which is where it was scheduled to be. Congratulations to the Royals for winning 9-6, and thank you to all the coaches that support and the families. I got to see some families as well that support them. I also had a chance to go to the Santa Barbara High School football playoffs against Corona del Mar. It was a tough end to the season, but I want to congratulate Coach Nate Mendoza, the players who, as you may have read, have been together for a long time as students and are now seniors. It was a tough loss, but they did really great. Congratulations to Santa Barbara High School for being in those playoff games. For the arts, I had a chance to attend the plays at both San Marcos and Dos Pueblos. They were both very moving plays and presentations. I want to really congratulate the cast, the set builders, the teachers, and everybody for putting on these two productions. I was really impressed with both plays because they really touched on the themes of inclusion and students with neurodiverse needs, and really highlighted the importance of that we are all one community. Very different plays, but again, very important. I recommend highly. Dos Pueblos has one more play on Thursday called Almost Maine, and San Marcos play, the last one, was on Saturday night. On Tuesday, I also had a chance, Tuesday, November 7th, I attended the Fall Cycle Celebration at the Santa Barbara Bowl. I've learned and been meeting with folks from the Santa Barbara Bowl. They provide really critical funding for youth performing arts programs in several annual award cycles, which include three high school theater and music programs, vocal music at San Marcos High School, choir at Santa Barbara High School, Adams Elementary Music, and after-school theater programs at La Cumbre Junior High School. For the Bs for belonging, last week was National School Psychology Week. We want to use this moment to highlight the important work that our school psychologists and other educators do to help all our students thrive. This year's theme is "Let's Grow Together," inspired by the importance of both personal and shared strengths in our growth as individuals and school communities in every season of life. San Marcos High School also, students led by their now ASB president, Kavya Suresh, who I think some of you know, led a commemorative event for Veterans Day, which featured a speech by Mr. Flores, one of San Marcos High School employees, who is also a veteran. They spoke in front of the memorial on campus. If you haven't seen it, it's right by the football field. Students had an opportunity to thank veterans who've served in the armed forces. He discussed the importance of Veterans Day, how it's observed, and I want to take a moment to also thank any of our teachers, staff, or others who are veterans and who have served. Lastly, to celebrate our community, I did get an email from Superintendent Susan Salcedo about her efforts to put in place a superintendent advisory council, much like what we have, Anastasia and I. So they do have groups of students that participate in the county education office as students. I want to thank Eva Chabestadi, Hannah Huang of Dos Pueblos High School, Emily Hernandez, and Estefania Berumen from San Marcos High School, and Sway Moore and Catherine Tulley from Santa Barbara High School, who volunteer on this student advisory council for Dr. Salcedo. I know that volunteering and service are really important aspects of our community and of supporting each other. I know in my personal life, when I've been of service, sometimes it has helped me more than it probably has helped the person that I'm volunteering for, providing a service to. So I want to thank the students for doing this work. I also want to thank Anastasia for helping recruit the students for the committee, because she led the effort to identify the students for that. I want to close by going back to the Every Child Award, as we always finish this report. And one second, I will start with Kristin Ballingmo from Harding University Partnership School. Kristin knows Harding students so well that she creates differentiated STEAM lessons to continually engage every student. As she facilitates each group lesson, she gently nudges each child to stretch into more of a challenging creative experience. Thank you, Kristin. Next, we have Elizabeth Comoa from Roosevelt Elementary. A fearless advocate for her students with IEPs, Ms. Comoa takes the time to know the individuals she serves. Her dedication to identify the nuances of individual student needs and develop plans of support that they truly facilitate growth and connection to learning benefits the entire Roosevelt community. And forgive me if I have not pronounced your name correctly. Maureen Granger from La Colina Junior High School. Maureen is committed to making La Colina an inclusive environment where every student feels safe and respected. She was instrumental in revitalizing the garden, supporting hands-on relevant learning and wellness while connecting with nature. I will say that if you need some nature and beauty in your life, go on over to the La Colina Garden. I have had a chance to go pick flowers, some vegetables. I didn't pick the vegetables, but I did see them growing vegetables, and they've done a lot of work in just creating a beautiful garden house. Amy McMillan from San Marcos High School. Amy is a trusted resource for many of our quietest and most vulnerable students. She hand-selects books for students from underrepresented groups every month and displays them prominently in the library. She also fostered a caring relationship with a student who recently passed away. And I want to go a little bit beyond with Amy, because I have seen her book displays, and I know that as a student who enjoyed the library and found it as a safe refuge, my two sons also found libraries a safe refuge. It's important that we have books that represent students, and there's an incredible feeling when you walk into a library and you see a book or read a book that represents your story, your experience in the world. So thank you, Amy, for that work. Megan Cuman from Cleveland Elementary. Megan is a mental health clinician who finds ways to meet with parents using other school resources so that families feel welcomed and can communicate in their home language. We know that she's not bilingual, but she definitely makes it work. She's always available for students in crisis. Thank you, Megan. Laura Ernest from La Cuesta Continuation High School. She really takes time to make students individual treats for the holidays, participates in school spirit activities by dressing up and encouraging students to also participate. She exemplifies the belief that all students can succeed, and she's always willing to give them every chance every day. We have two more. Tina Solberg from Santa Barbara Community Academy. At lunch, many Spanish-speaking students like to join Tina and teach her Spanish, while she teaches them English, which is always a value add. Tina speaks to doctors for families who have a difficult time understanding our medical system, supports them with their paperwork. Thank you, Tina. And last, from Dos Pueblos High School, Jake Boone. Jake's students, parents, along with his team of parent educators, have all sung his praises for his ability to connect and engage with our students and create a wonderful learning community for students with moderate to severe disabilities. Thank you, Jake. Yes, now we can applaud for all of them. We want to thank you all for doing that every day, and we want to highlight these stories because we know that is exactly where the work is most focused in. So, board members, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and congratulations to all the teachers who are doing special work out there and being recognized by their peers. Next, we'll move to board comments and correspondence. Board members? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you. Really short report today. Good to see everyone. Thank you to Anastasia and Keon for your report. Thank you, Keon, for your very important reminder to be kind to one another, but even more importantly, the importance of mental health supports for our kids, and just remembering Shaila and her family this really difficult time. And in a similar spirit, remembering Sojourner Kincaid's role, which I think President Simms-Moten is going to say a little bit more when it's her turn. And continued welcome to Principal Fred Razo. Thank you.
Ms. Minos?
Yes, hello. Good evening. I would like to, first of all, talk about next week in terms of opportunity, you know, whether you celebrate Thanksgiving, Takesgiving, or just some days off. whether you celebrate Thanksgiving, Takesgiving, or just some days off, to pause, listen to each other, and appreciate every moment because we honestly do, don't know what, when that last time that we're going to see someone. And certainly, I've had, you know, losses that have happened suddenly, and of course, we're thinking of San Marcos High School, the students and the staff, and of course, Shyla's family. You know, thinking of them and having them in your thoughts. I attended the salute to teachers on November 4th with my 86-year-old mother. She was very impressed. She told Susan Salcido, like, where did you learn how to say all these words and so forth? It was so nice to see the teachers with their loved ones, with their family or friends there, and I had the honor to meet, let's see if you give me a minute, Sammy Lambert from San Marcos, who was amazing. I look forward to going to her class and seeing what she teaches. She told me what the subject was, but I kind of went over my head. I'll admit that. Ryan Henzel from Galita Valley Junior High. Like to, you know, just impressive. And Tiffany Gonzalez from Peabody Charter School. I did have a chance to introduce my mom to Vic, Dr. Victor Rios, and she had, my mom had actually, I have a little short story, if I may share. I had my mom with me. I work remote, so I was in Ventura and working and such, and I'm like, well, I always have books, you know, here's a book, you know, I don't know, here's a few if you want to check them out. She started reading Dr. Victor Rios' book and could so much relate as like a single mom and the hardships that they went through and so forth. So my mom is hearing impaired, as I am, so I said, Mom, this is Dr. Victor Rios, the book, you know? And so then, it was like, she, she was, I'm not sure who this person is, who this young man is standing in front of us. And I said, he's a middle middle. He's an important person. He writes about life. My mom just started just, you know, crying, just very emotional, and started talking to him just like as she always, as she, as if she had known him forever. So very, sorry, very special to be able to introduce her to him. I also want to recognize good friend and such an honor to have known our poet, Sojourner Kincaid Rowle, who passed recently. She served as a laureate for the city of Santa Barbara from 2015 to 2017. A black woman, poet, educator, historian, social justice advocate, and a fellow woman of color. I had been in several occasions where her and I would just chat on the side, and I, you know, she's just was, is and will always be in my heart. I saw from the wonderful article in The Independent that she had been an artist in residence at Santa Barbara Junior High a while back, and we had, she had talked to us about her book that she wrote, Free at Last, a Juneteenth poem that won national acclaim as one of the 15 books for young people on the subject of slavery. Being what she was and what she represented, a humble and very special person who I believe, you know, deserves recognition, and, and our community was very fortunate to have her.
Mr. Banning?
I've spent more than 40 years in public education and had the opportunity to experience every possible emotion connected with the work that I've done and the service that I've given. All of it pales when we lose children. Thank you, Anastasia and Keon, for reminding us of that and the importance of kindness. I had an opportunity earlier this week, just yesterday as a matter of fact, to speak to the senior class in the Apple Academy at San Marcos High School. I'd heard about the program. I just happened to run into a former parent from my time in Galita who helped them set up their speaker series, ran into him at dinner a couple of times, and suddenly I found myself speaking to this group and found myself humbled by the great work that's going on in that program. And particularly, Jermaine is the interest in the importance of community outreach and volunteering. So we're talking about, about these things. I talked to them about some of the opportunities that I've had to provide service, paid service as an educator, volunteer service here, service in community organizations, and encouraged all of them to remember the importance of community as they grow up, as they move on into college, and to keep at the, at the heart of their goals for the future, an opportunity to provide service again in the communities that matter. Which brings me back to Fred Razo. Thank you, Fred, for providing a service at a time that it was necessary and stepping up and finding it easy to say yes. Appreciate very much your service to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, and I'll just, I won't reiterate, but thank you for those kind words about Ms. Sojourner Kincaid Rowle, such a dear friend who always was willing to share her gift and invite you to share in her gift. It's, it's just really hard in my heart right now in terms of that and knowing that this light will forever shine and through. If you ever had a chance to talk to her, read anything about what she was reading, then you know it was always about uplifting our youth as well. She participated and really ran the MLK poetry and encouraged our children, which is also coming up, so we want to encourage our children to participate in that, to express it, something, something about expressing ourselves, especially now in a way that we don't have words always to express what's going on, particularly with our youth. She encouraged them to find themselves in their words if it's just to express them for a few minutes, and so that was very, very important to her. And again, she always wanted to, through her work, allow you to let your light so shine. I had the opportunity to participate in a play that she had wrote called IO's Journey. It was such a learning opportunity, so you look it up, it's probably on the web, or you can just look up Sojourner, you're going to get a whole history lesson of this wonderful member of our community. And we want to also send our thoughts and prayers out to her husband, Rod Rowle, who's also a photographer here, who knows a lot of the work that you've seen. So just to be in her presence and to know what she was, and just to think she started, she wanted to be an attorney, and next thing you know, she was a porch. So you can be anything that you want to be, right? So all experiences may lead you down different paths, but I'm just so glad to have passed this way with her. I also had the opportunity to attend her 80th birthday, and so she was celebrating that, you know? And she was, as she was speaking, she, she kept, she stopped in the middle of her speech, and she looked to the left, and she looked to the right, and we were like, what's going on? And she says, you always want to look to the right and look to the left, who's in the arena. Make sure you know, everybody knows that you're speaking to them and that you're including as being a part of them. So she was always about including you in there. Again, being kind and being thoughtful. So if we could just pause for a moment to just appreciate the spirit that she was on this earth and the light that she'll continue to be in our hearts of those who know her. Thank you, and thank you, Sojourner, for letting your light so shine. And then lastly, I would say, I was listening to the Secretary of Education about two things they're focusing on this year, and one of them, one of the main ones that they were talking about is, is youth, student youth mental health, how we are looking at our youth, how we as communities have to look at student health, and it's not just adolescents. It's not just this, there's some serious things that we need to make sure that, that our students, that our children in our community know that we see them and that as a community we're going to surround and support them. So I, I really will be following that. There'll be funding to be able to make sure that we have positions available to be able to support things that are coming up and really having the student voice in that. So I encourage us to make sure that we are writing letters to the Secretary of Education about that initiative that's coming down and making sure that it doesn't, you know, go away when we think things have just calmed down. That tends to happen. I keep, and it's really important also with early care and mental health, you know, we think they're just the terrible twos, but they might not be a little bit more than that. So it's important to start at the root of what's going on and making sure they're focusing on that as well. So you're seeing a lot of initiatives come out regarding early mental health, working along with our behavioral wellness, also working with our legislators to really ensure that the care and education of our children is an untouchable entitlement. It goes past budget. When you're having budget woes, the touchable, the care for our children and the education of our children, it's going to survive everything. They're entitled to that care and education. So you'll see me talking about that. That's going to be a tagline. The care and education of our children is an untouchable entitlement. So I'd like to thank you, everyone, for your comments that were here today, and now we'll move to our public comments, and we do know that we have 90 seconds for each one to speak. So, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you. All right, we have 90 seconds. I'll give a gentle 30-second warning. I'll call out three names at a time. First up, we have Cressida Silvers, followed by Brett Larson, followed by Rich Lashua. We'll be patient.
And we want to remind ourselves, so we can hear you and not waste the time that you're coming up here to speak, let's, let's make sure that we're doing that.
Apologies.
And we're going to, we're going to close a public comment right now.
And if I, sorry, I got it wrong. The light turns yellow when it's 20 seconds.
Yeah.
So I'll give a gentle reminder.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So, good evening. I'm a parent in the district, and I'm here to speak about the most recent violent assault on a black student at Santa Barbara Junior High. I'm aware that the student who was attacked had been targeted by their assailants in multiple ways, over multiple years, in multiple SBUSD schools. We must do a better job of changing the climate in our schools so that racist words and actions are simply not tolerated. Was a plan in place to protect this child from these known and ongoing threats? Did this child have a safe adult that they could go to? Staff who are looking out for them at vulnerable times, like lunch, PE, and in-between classes? Someone checking in with them and their family regularly? When the unchecked anti-black bullying turned physically violent, was this child and their family swiftly provided a counselor or other type of mental health support? Or was that support provided the next day, the next week? Has it been provided at all? An attack like this is a crisis, and in its aftermath, the well-being of this child, the restoration of their safety, trust, and the feeling that they are valued must be prioritized.
20 seconds.
Resilience is not a solitary endeavor. Please remain diligent to ensure all of your hard work fighting anti-blackness, as presented at these meetings, actually translates into effective, consistent actions at the school site level, and that this child and their family get the immediate and ongoing support that they seek and they deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brett Larson, followed by Rich Lashua. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, board members, cabinet members. I'm the music teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High, as well as at Cleveland, and we're talking a lot, you're going to hear from a lot of teachers about budgets tonight, but for me, it's, we're talking about this on how to best serve the students in our district. With that in mind, I want to tell you about some students that aren't being served at all. This year, for the first time in my 14 years here, 7th graders cannot take music at Santa Barbara Junior High during the regular school day. I can tell you again, so I want everyone to know, because I don't think you do, 7th graders cannot take music during the regular school day at Santa Barbara Junior High, only during zero period. This is not equitable, it's not sustainable, and it flies in the face of our credo, every child, every chance, every day. The reasons we come to this crisis are varied and beyond the control of one music teacher, but I think there are solutions. I have lots of ideas. I just need someone to listen to me. But it has to be immediate. This crisis has been going on for several years, and we need the courage and creativity to change it. By the way, courage and creativity are things that music teaches. I would be thrilled to meet and talk with anyone on some ideas on how we can turn this around, because the kids need it. It's part of SEL, it's, it's part of school culture. I'm going to send you all an email later.
Thank you.
But you'll have my contact and, and things. You can talk to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rich Lashua, followed by Kavya Suresh, followed by, I'm going to get this wrong, please forgive me, Zoe Javembach? If you hear your name in your next, if you could queue up for the next couple of speakers, we have Kavya Suresh, Zoe Javembach. Welcome.
Hi. Social-emotional learning is a top need for the post-pandemic secondary student. Arts and career tech breed perseverance, confidence, empathy, organizational skills, personal responsibility, and teamwork. The current system limits classes to kids who don't have avid English support or math support. This skews access sharply along racial and socioeconomic lines. It's an equity issue. Elective classes reduce chronic absences, increase student engagement, improve school climates, and test scores. For decades, struggling schools have resurfaced when the arts are prioritized. Kids investing in their own education yields priceless dividends. Seven-period days guarantee all students access to an elective, keeping most vulnerable students off the streets and supervised in classes they chose, learning valuable career skills. Santa Barbara Junior High lost the only film class in the junior high system this year due to schedule constraints, troubling in a town that Robert Zemeckis calls home. Music programs are in decline. In a district that had Katy Perry as a student right around the time those cuts were made, it's embarrassing. Increasing salaries does not mean allowing the arts to die. Every child, every chance, every day, and college and career ready. Arts are one-third of California's economy, which is the fifth largest in the world. Come see some of the processes at the Marjorie Luke Theater this Thursday and Friday night at 7:00. I've got a few dozen English, mult, emerging multilingual learners, special education students, honor roll leaders, kids trying to break the cycle of poverty, and yes, one or two extroverts, all pulling together to put up the goofiest, messiest parody of Shakespeare's Macbeth you could ever dream of.
Thank you.
See you there.
Welcome.
Hi, board. Thank you so much for giving me the time to speak today in a different setting. I'm here to speak and elevate the voices of my San Marcos student peers who have asked me to be a representative of their 2,000 voices, to voice some of the concerns that they have following the tragic incident that occurred last week. Many students are now afraid that they don't have a trusted adult on their school campuses. They're questioning, how can I have a trusted adult on campus if my teacher leaves within the first or second year that I'm actually at school? Some other concerns that have been brought up are, in the classroom, many students feel safe, safer than they even feel at home, but once they go home, where does that safety go? Who can they rely on? Who can they talk to? Especially once that 8:30 to 3:30 school day ends, where is the support for them? Where is that going? Who are we talking to? The next thing that's been brought up is that we are working as a community, but we all feel so isolated and so separated. Why do we see a school as separate entities, as administration, as faculty, as students, when we're all continually working together, building up each other, uplifting each other, and it's always a shifting effort that everyone has to have, all hands on deck always? Why do we feel so independent in this fight? And lastly, a concern that has been raised is that we all inherit the stress and trauma of each other. If our teachers are stressed, we feel it as students. If our students are stressed, we feel it as teachers. If anybody in our community is stressed, we feel it and we inherit it. So how can we take care of each other, especially when we as students have been taken care of for so long? Thank you.
Zoe Javembach, followed by Jim Mui, followed by Brianna Serrato. Welcome. Sorry if I got your last name wrong.
It's okay. Hello, my name is Zoe Javembach. I am a senior at San Marcos High School, and I just wanted to speak to highlight all of the hard work that our teachers do to help us in our learning and to make school more fun for everyone. I would have never passed my AP World History test without the help of my world history teacher, who came to school early every morning to help hold these study sessions for our students and my friends, and they were actually really fun. I got to interact with my teacher, and he really helped us a lot, and we all did really well as a result of that. Additionally, they do really great things to make school interactive, like I remember loving Walk Through the Middle Ages for history at my school. Entrepreneurship Academy has so many interactive group activities to do and to learn how to work together as a team, and my favorite part of the school day in general is real time, because not only is it a time where you can interact with your teachers to get extra help for academic classes, but they also hold really fun activities like film screenings, where you can watch films and analyze them for like their story. You can play sports, 3D printing, which I did, and it was really fun. You can play sports, 3D printing, which I did, and it was really fun. And the biggest thing was, I had a teacher who established my ethnic studies club, which is the club I am most passionate about. And now she is gone, and I really wish that she wasn't. So I just wanted to highlight all the contributions that my teachers have made.
Thank you. Jim Mui, followed by Brianna Serrato, followed by Barbara Parment. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members. Your job is hard. Thank you for your service, by the way. My name is Jim Mui, and I've been teaching instrumental music in public school systems since 1989. Great hair. I am here to remind you that the new health requirement is preventing seventh graders at the junior high level from enrolling in band, orchestra, and choir, and not to mention all of the other wonderful arts that we used to offer so robustly in this district. The bottleneck is affecting high school enrollments and needs to be addressed at the board level immediately. The solution is obvious but not simple: reinstate a seven-period day. The seven-period day was much easier to cut than it will be to reinstate. The teachers' union will need to be involved, and I understand there's some negotiations going on for how much? Six point seven million? There you go. I know there's some negotiations going on. The teachers' union will need to be involved in this, if we're going to add a seven-period day back in the schedule. Currently, the district is not providing music to all students, which is part of the state code, by the way.
Twenty seconds.
Please reinstate the master schedule committee so that we can make progress in this regard. I understand it was dismantled. It needs to be put back together. We still do not have a single junior high teacher that is teaching music full-time at their school. This was not the case fifteen years ago. Santa Maria and Ventura schools have figured it out. Why haven't we?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brianna Serrato. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name is Brianna Serrato, and I am a parent and advocate, not only for my two children, but for all children, especially those in marginalized groups, including students with disabilities and other learning differences. I am speaking up and speaking out tonight on their behalf by supporting the amazing teachers and paraeducators that are severely underpaid and undervalued by this district, as evidenced by continually maintaining the status quo of trying to hit the very bare minimum of the mandated percentage of the budget going to their compensation. This has been evidenced in the district's inability to hire and keep on qualified staff, and in turn, having to spend even more in both money and personnel time by contracting with other agencies. Even with those contracts, the district is opening itself up to innumerable lawsuits in failing to meet legal obligations with student IEPs when they do not have the staff. It took the district a trimester to hire a travel, not just an actual teacher, a traveler, sped teacher for the older grades at my children's school. Because of this, the amazing Elizabeth Como, who was just honored by Superintendent Maldonado, has had an unimaginable caseload of TK through fifth grade. I did not include sixth grade in that sentence, because they have not had their IEP minutes for three months. How is that meeting the LCAP goals? How is that okay for administration at the district and the board? Not just morally, but potentially by hemorrhaging money in lawsuits. I urge the board to direct administration to rectify these staffing issues by agreeing to pay staff what they need to be able to survive in Santa Barbara, so that they can actually give every student every chance, every day. In doing so, the district's staff and parents can then focus on their initiatives for social justice.
We have two virtual public commenters. The first one is Barbara Parment, followed by Carrie Hutchinson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, Board, thank you. I wholly support the SBUSD policy to recognize, respond, and report every racial incident. What I find troubling is the fact that we do have students that are repeatedly abused by other students and where the teachers are not adequately responding to these racial incidents. And recently, I've heard that an abused and traumatized student was not offered immediate mental health support. With these extremely troubling incidents, I have not heard of any specific plan in place to make sure an abused student feels safe in the halls with plenty of dedicated staff support. I understand that the parent often feels abandoned and sees that their child is not valued enough to be protected and supported physically, mentally, and socially. It may be our collective responsibility to improve the racial climate in our schools, but it is the legal responsibility of the district to implement policies that actually result in the safe welfare of these students. Good intentions are not enough. The actual impact on the abused student and their family must be the number-one priority of the Santa Barbara Unified School District, resulting in healthy, safe, and happy students. Please follow through with actions that are more than just good intentions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have another virtual public commenter, Carrie Hutchinson.
Good evening, Board members. I want to thank you for your work in trying to do better by Black students and families in the district through your support of the work group and the new process for reporting racist incidents. While these measures are an important step, I want to make sure that you don't lose sight of other equally important measures that need to be taken to reduce these incidents in the first place, and especially to provide timely and meaningful support for the children who experience racism in our schools and for their families. I was recently made aware of yet another incident where it seems that the school and district response has been deeply inadequate. Please know that each time a racist incident occurs in our schools, the community is watching with reasonable expectations for how teachers, staff, and school leaders react. As the group of decision-makers who are charged with ensuring school policies and procedures contribute to a healthy community in which we all live, you are accountable to this entire community, not just the children and families who are directly harmed each time there is an incident. An earlier student speaker said it well when she explained that stress on anyone in the community creates stress on the entire community. Of course, you cannot control the behavior of all students at all schools in the district, but you can create more effective procedures for supporting harmed students and better training for the adults in charge, so they are equipped for this incredibly important duty. I am certain that you're aware of the research on child development, showing that the ways in which a child is supported or not supported when they experience harm has a lifelong impact, and poor support can result in even greater trauma than the incident itself. Thank you again for the work you've done so far, but please know that your work is far from over and continue to treat incidents of racism in our schools as the urgent crisis that they are.
Thank you. Madam President, that's the end of general public comment.
Great, thank you. Now we'll move to item E1, Acceptance of Donations for November fourteenth. You're actually, you're going to talk, it's under G. It's under the G1. We have all the slips for G1, under the public hearing. That's where you'll be speaking, not in general public. That's for, the public, general public is for non-adjourned items. And so we have thirty slips for G1, which we will be speaking. So, we'll move to item E1. Again, Board members, acceptance of donations for November fourteenth. May I have a motion?
I move to accept the donations, particularly noting that these are for the use of music at two different schools.
Second.
Been motioned second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next, Board members, we'll move to our consent agenda. Can I please have a little quiet here so we can continue to conduct business, so we can get you two speaking? The consent agenda item, if you, if there are any requests to pull any items for clarification or further discussion. Right, hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Been moved in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll close our regular hearing and move to G, which is our public hearing. The second sunshining of Santa Barbara Teachers Association for Success or Contract Negotiations for the 2427 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Santa Barbara Unified District. Going to come up and have a few comments. Dr. Vecchio, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Sims Moten, Board members, Superintendent Maldonado. This public hearing is the opportunity for public to hear the articles that are being sunshined by Santa Barbara Teachers Association and also by Santa Barbara Unified. These items will appear on the action agenda as well. And I now turn it over to the Board for the public hearing.
Okay. Any comments you need to pretend? Okay, we will move to comments now. Mr. Escobedo.
Yes, we have thirty-one public comments. First one up is Leo Borden, followed by Rebecca Sillers, followed by Kelly Savio. So first up is Leo Borden. Welcome.
As a teacher, I've seen superintendents and boards come and go. And while I haven't always agreed with their decisions or policies, I believe that we're always working towards a common goal: to serve our students in the best way possible. However, after thirty-two years at Santa Barbara Junior High, I feel compelled to speak as I witness the steady decline of our district under the current superintendent and board's reign of error. And sadly, I have come to realize that no one sitting in front of me truly cares about the people who stand behind me. We have a superintendent who has driven off every member of our cabinet except for one. More troubling is the annual exodus of teachers, over a hundred this past year and a hundred more before that. And what is the reaction? Adding more staff to our already bloated administration and writing a book full of empty promises and false platitudes. And as for the board, I have attended the last four board meetings and listened to my colleagues pour their hearts out. They vividly described how difficult it is to survive on a teacher's salary, how they struggle to afford an apartment, the long commutes they must undertake because they can't afford to live in a community that they serve, the uncertainty of how they will be able to pay their monthly bills, much less how they are going to save for their children's college education or for their own retirement.
Thank you.
And most heartbreaking of all,
Thank you for your public comment.
how they are considering not just leaving the district,
Thank you for your public comment.
but the profession they love as well. And what is your response indifference?
Next.
Every single person behind me,
Please. Thank you.
dropped everything.
Next, we have Rebecca Sillers.
Rebecca.
... consolation and began searching for solutions after hearing even one of their stories. What did you do? Met in secret to unanimously approve a motion to seek a waiver to pay teachers less than the minimum of the state mandates. Your silence is deafening, your callousness is cruel.
Mr. Borden, we want to be respectful of your other colleagues that need to speak, so could you allow them to please come to the podium?
Quit confusing the scene with the floor.
Please, Mr. Borden.
Ask for your time limit.
May you please have...
Is there a time limit when the people behind me give up their lunch hour to run a club? Is someone calling time when teachers open their rooms to provide a safe, warm, caring environment for their students? Is someone announcing thirty seconds when we're grading papers on a Saturday afternoon or writing a last-minute letter of recommendation? Is there a two-minute limit when a student needs someone to talk to when you're the only adult they can trust? Teaching life the truth has no limit. You want our silence? Pay us what we're worth. You want our compliance?
Sir, can you please respect our Board President?
You don't like our defiance? Pay us what we've earned. And I'm sorry for my transgression. Maybe I'll ask the state for a waiver.
Can you call the next person? Next.
Next, we have Rebecca Sillers.
Rebecca Silvers, are you on the way?
Next, we have Rebecca Sillers, followed by Kelly Savio, which is followed by Andrew Southard. Do we have Rebecca? Okay. If you're next, please queue up. We have Kelly Savio after Rebecca.
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Rebecca Sillers. I'm a product of Santa Barbara School District. I've taught for twenty-seven years at Lockalina Junior High School. I'm now at the top of the pay scale, but despite my years of service and commitment, I can't afford a house. At fifty-nine years old, I share an apartment with a roommate. Because even with a rent lower than market rate, I can't afford it on my own. I have a twenty-year-old car. Remember, I'm at the top of my pay scale. The call for teachers to remember your why in recent years, as education has gotten tougher, resonates with us all as we remain in this noble profession for the sake of our students. We all remember our why. That's why we're still here. Yet it raises a question: do you, the school board, remember your why? Why are teachers consistently placed on the last list of priorities, last on the list of budgeting and attention? Six point seven million dollars. Let me say it again. Six point seven million dollars. And instead of paying us what the state requires you to do, you want to ask the state for permission not to. Why? The historic, historic pattern of discounting the needs of teachers
Thank you.
in the district is shameful.
Thank you for your public comment.
And it prompts me to ask why.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly Savio, followed by Andrew Southard. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kelly Savio, and I'm an English teacher at Dos Publicos. And I'm deeply troubled that you unanimously approved a waiver that essentially told our district it was okay to accidentally underpay staff by almost seven million dollars. And you did so after asking exactly zero questions about how that happened. And yet you asked several questions about the cybersecurity insurance policy that was presented at the same meeting. I'm stunned that no one asked why our hard-working staff should get underpaid for a year because the district office made a really big mistake. As an English teacher, I am the first to admit that math is hard and sometimes very tricky. But no one asked how such a big mistake was made or what steps are being taken to ensure it doesn't happen again. And after hearing in that same presentation about all the difficulties hiring paraeducators, teachers, and bus drivers, not one person asked if the issue might be partially due to COVID but might also have been because the pay is actually not enough to survive in this community. Is it any wonder that the staff's trust in the district is so damaged? Please ensure this trust starts being repaired at the bargaining table. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Andrew Southard, followed by Kim Barron. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to say something here that I don't say a lot, which is that I want to be a teacher after I'm done with college. And I don't say that a lot, because whenever I say it, I get the same exact reaction, which is people telling me to do just about anything else. And for good reason. I sent in my application today to Ohio University, where I really hope to go. And I had a moment of doubt before pressing that last button, because on my application, I had said that I wanted to major in education. And that was a really hard thing to do. But I firmly believe that there is a chance, at least, that I will not be living in poverty by ten, twenty, thirty, forty years after I graduate from college. I'd like to donate my last forty-five seconds to the person that said all the things that I would say if I had the right words to.
Thank you. Next, we have Kim Barron, who's followed by, I can't read the handwriting, I'm sorry, but I think the last name starts with R-I-E. And first name might be Z... And first name might be Z-O. It's really hard to read. Thank you and welcome.
Good evening. So it was recently revealed that the district travel and conference budget increased by an astounding one million dollars. How is this possible? There is speculation that the district cabinet members who live out of town are getting funds to live in Santa Barbara during the week. If you want to clarify this and put people's minds at rest that this is not the case, you can give a detailed accounting and explanation of this increase. Maybe we could spend the money on buying buses and paying people more. The money spent on consultants increased from eleven million dollars to sixteen million. The people who are working at our district office should be able to do most of the work that consultants do. So that makes me ask, are you hiring the wrong people? Because it seems like the more people who work in admin, the more consultants you hire, and it doesn't add up. Okay. These are examples of where it's very unclear where millions of dollars are going and what they're being spent on in this district. There is no transparency, which the district has been criticized for the last few years. The one thing that is certain is that the district is not willing to spend money on salary increases and benefits for teachers and staff so that they can live in the community in which they work. Once again, I will remind you that none of you on the board or in the executive cabinet are low-income, and why should teachers and staff be?
Thank you. Next up, we have York Shingle, followed by Shannon Curtis, followed by Preston Janson. Or Janson. Welcome.
Six point seven million dollars. Class, did you hear that? I think you did. That's the amount that you owe teachers, and we aren't going to forget, nor are we going to let our community forget. We've been coming out here begging and pleading for a living wage, and y'all can't even meet the state minimum to pay us. The minimum. Your explanation of why you paid us below the minimum? Class, how much was it again?
Six point seven million dollars.
Made me see that we've barely been skimming above the minimum. We know what we're doing as a district. You don't hit fifty-five point zero-two percent without knowing it. So that makes me question, did you know you were going to underpay us and you knew that you could apply for a waiver? I am waiting for your answer. I've talked to Ms. Wendy about it. I've talked to Virginia about it. I'll wait to hear from the other board members. You regularly talk about working with the union with trust and respect. You don't respect us. You don't underpay us by how much?
Six point seven million dollars.
And then send out a message, let me find the quote, "The district values its employees and stands ready to engage in meaningful negotiations." You don't. And we aren't going to accept the gaslighting. You do not underpay us the state minimum and what our neighboring districts are receiving and tell us that's respect. It's not. So we aren't here for words, we're here for action.
Thank you. Shannon Curtis, followed by Preston Janson. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am speaking on behalf of our district teacher librarians. Each of our secondary schools is staffed by a teacher librarian who possesses both a teaching credential, teacher librarian credential, and often a master's degree in librarian information science. We help select materials for our schools, instruct both students and teachers how to acquire, evaluate, and use information effectively, introduce young people to literature and other resources that broaden their horizons, collaborate with teachers on inquiry-based learning experiences, promote digital citizenship and fair use policies, and create a learning environment that is fun, inviting, safe, and inclusive. As a result, the libraries at our junior high and high schools are thriving. Unfortunately, this is not the case at the elementary level. In 2020, our one teacher librarian who oversaw all of SB Unified's elementary libraries left the district to work at MUS. Her position has never been filled. Though our elementary libraries, our school libraries are staffed by library technicians, the libraries vary greatly in both available resources and services. These libraries are not hubs of instruction and learning, but instead are warehouses for books, quite literally. This year, some of the elementary libraries have not even opened because their library techs are so overburdened with processing the new ELA adoption. Our elementary students deserve better. We urge this board to stop spending money on positions that have no direct impact on our schools and student achievement and instead prioritize resources where they directly affect our students. Please put students first and hire elementary teacher librarians.
Thank you. Preston Janson, followed by Carla Hernandez, followed by Maddie Bordofsky. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Preston Janson, and I'm in the ninth grade at San Marcos High School. I entered the Santa Barbara Unified School District in the seventh grade, and every single teacher I've had has been nothing short of incredible. But many are leaving the district or counting down the days until retirement. This is affecting my younger brother Finn, who is autistic. I've witnessed how the district's unwillingness to pay a living wage is affecting his and many others' special education. Caseloads have greatly supported student, oh, caseloads have increased. There are not enough paras, and there's, and there's high turnover among staff who support students with IEPs. Over the past two years, I've witnessed more days than I can count where the district was unable to keep in compliance with Finn's IEP because of the lack of staff, which goes directly back to the district's unwillingness to take care of their employees. The support I've gotten from my current and previous teachers has been incredible these past few years. For example, my seventh and eighth-grade teacher, Mr. Hodgson, would always go out of his way to make sure that everyone in my class felt motivated and supported, whether it be giving me a little motivational speeches when I was going through a hard time or giving the class popsicles and individually complimenting everyone while handing them out. I witnessed my amazing teachers feeling overwhelmed, disheartened, unsupported, and frustrated. Yet they still show up for us every day. These people have dedicated their lives to the children of Santa Barbara. And my life, like so many others, has been changed because of them. While my peers and my teacher, while my peers and I want our teachers in the classroom with us continuing to go above and beyond in their efforts to help us learn and be successful, we will support them and back them up one hundred percent in their fight.
Thank you. Thank you. Carla Hernandez, followed by Maddie Bordofsky.
All right. Thank you for letting me speak. And thank you for the AC, by the way, it's very welcoming. I did want to tell you a little bit about me. So I am highly invested in Santa Barbara Unified. I'm a former Dawn, once a Dawn, always a Dawn. And I was privileged to have the best students, teachers, when I was growing up. They really invested in me, and they cared about me, and they taught me to be brave and to dream, you know? And so I am grateful for Santa Barbara Unified and the teachers that were there for me. Fred Rozo, you were there. I don't know if he remembers. I am a parent. I'm coming to you as a parent. My children are high achievers, Franklin Eagles, and I'm so proud of them. But they have been surrounded by wonderful teachers from Ms. Slater and Nicholson when they were in kindergarten to Mr. Rodriguez and Guien, now that my littlest is in sixth grade. Amazing teachers that have loved and cared for them and encouraged them and are allowing them to thrive and to be their very best. But I'm also here as your employee, a teacher at Harding, a person who loves her students and is surrounded by amazing teachers that come in early in the morning, they leave late at night. They put their own money where their mouth is and support their students. And I think that we give a hundred percent, sometimes a hundred and twenty percent, sometimes more. And I ask for you to give more than fifty-five percent. So thank you.
Thank you. We have Maddie Bordofsky, followed by Eric Leyland, followed by Theo Coretto. Welcome.
Good evening, cabinet superintendent and members of the board. I would like to start by thanking you. There is nothing I dislike doing more than public speaking. Yet you have all inspired me to be here tonight. My name is Madeline Bordofsky. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Harding University Partnership School, and this is my tenth year in the district. I share this information with you because unlike previous administrations who knew my name, my face, my school site, my grade level, I am certain that none of you could pick me out of a lineup. You push your school administrators to know every student's name, face, and story. But you don't lead by example by getting to know your teachers. Because if you did know your teachers, you would know all of the amazing ways that they are supporting their students every single day despite the obstacles that they face both in and out of school. And with that knowledge, there's no way you could sit up here tonight and feel anything but shame for the lack of effort that you have shown to make our district a place where teachers feel respected, like their jobs are manageable, like they're supported, and like they're able to survive not only financially, just to survive, but to build the lives that they deserve. I hope that when you sit down at the negotiating table tomorrow, you come to bargain in good faith. And quite honestly, I hope you survive us. I mean, I hope you surprise us so that I can come back to the next meeting and thank you again, this time for truly putting our students first by showing a clear commitment to your teachers.
Thank you. Next, we have Eric Leyland, followed by Theo Coretto, followed by Kate Lambert. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name's Eric Leyland. I'm a woodshop teacher at San Marcos High School. I was born and raised here and have had the majesty and opportunity to teach at the high school that I graduated from. I now call some of my coworkers, now I call some of my teachers coworkers. This semester, I filled in for more than two weeks as a co-taught sped class for a position that they couldn't fill. I was shocked to find that there was no one even applying to the position. Which was, this is leaving so many of our sped students in a vulnerable and falling behind. Our students are suffering because of the district's pay and benefits that cannot sustain teachers and attract new ones. Teachers will continue to leave if things don't change. And who is going to suffer the most? Our students, which is the reason we should all be here. You cannot say you care about children and their chance to learn every day without caring about the welfare of teachers. Investing in students inherently means investing in teachers.
Twenty seconds.
The students are our future, and I want to stay long enough in Santa Barbara to invest in the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Theo Coretto, followed by Kate Lambert, followed by Joe Helsizer. Welcome.
Thanks for the chance to speak, board. I'm a Santa Barbara Unified School District alum. I'm a resident of Santa Barbara, and I'm the son of a USD teacher. And I'm here to ask for fairness and respect for teachers tomorrow at the bargaining table. It's unjust that teachers can't afford to live where they teach. It's unjust that teachers can't afford to have a comfortable and stable career. It's unjust, especially that early childhood and sped teachers are especially underpaid. It's unjust that the district is relying on their teachers to make personal financial sacrifices in order to support the students that they teach. And it deprives teachers of valuable, long-term colleagues because they have to move on when they can no longer afford to work in the district. It deprives students of teachers who can't afford to live here and can't share the experience that they've had because they don't have the financial privilege to make those sacrifices. It's unfair to the teachers, it's unfair to the students, and it's unfair to the community. And the power is in your hands to remedy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Helsizer. I currently teach at Dos Pueblos High School as a special education teacher in charge of the therapeutic learning program. I also support gen ed teachers in the general education setting so I get to establish wonderful relationships with all students. As some of you aboard already know, I try to do all I can for these students and for the district. Mrs. Maldonado, you have recently sent me a card thanking me for the work I do. I appreciate the time you took to recognize my contributions to the students in the district as a teacher, a tip mentor, a lit mentor, speech and debate coach, and the scoreboard operator at both girls and boys' basketball and football games. While I do these extra duties because I truly love supporting students to learn and grow, I am forced to do this due to the high cost of rent. I pay over four thousand dollars a month just for my rent. Mrs. Alvarez, you know me, as well as my wife. You have seen the passion we have both brought to the students at Montecito Union as paraprofessionals. My wife has a teacher's aid and aided the Y program at MUS. You know how much money we make. We live month to month, just like a lot of other hard-working teachers in this district. Mrs. Maldonado, while I appreciate the acknowledgement you provided in your letter, what I really want is for the district bargaining team to be prepared to offer salaries teachers can live on in this extremely expensive community. I, along with my fellow teachers, deserve as much. I grew up in Pennsylvania, my wife in Arkansas. I've always lived, I've always dreamed of living in California. My wife and I, and my wife and I both lost our dads in the past six months. We were trying to figure out how to take care of our mothers. I want to move my mom here, but I can't afford to.
Thank you.
I am trying to move, I am trying to seriously consider moving back to Pennsylvania due to this. If the district is unwilling to come to the table prepared for productive conversation, that shows me that my dream of living here and making the lives of the students in Santa Barbara better was all for nothing. I hope that's not the case.
Thank you. Next, we have Kate Lambert, followed by Becca Ranch, followed by Josby Galindo. Welcome.
Thank you, guys, for letting us know that having a banner would be a fire hazard. It is not. But we took it off of our post. We offered you lots of ways we could bring it in, and you still said no, so I'm wearing it. And if I have to leave, that is just fine. This is six hundred and eleven teachers that want you to know that they support our petition to go to negotiations. We've already come up with it, we've already talked about it. And this is hundreds of people, and it's like forty hours' worth of work. Thank you to my digital graphic designer who helped with all of this. Thank you to every campus that collected the photos and shared our platform. We made sure we knew exactly what we were signing up for, and this is going to go everywhere. I'm going to make sure it does. So the first place it's going to go, hopefully, is the California Teachers Association magazine. And they wanted a full picture, they asked us for one. And now it's going to be this, because you said no. I yield the rest of my time for anyone else.
Thank you. Next, we have Becca Ranch, followed by Josby Galindo, followed by Sammy Lambert. Welcome.
Hi, I'm a parent of a junior high school and high school student in our district. Our family does not want to lose our certificated staff. We've already lost too many. Pay the district staff who work with our children a daily basis the salaries they deserve. Our staff sees fellow educators living in our community Our staff sees fellow educators living in our community make far more than they do for the same work. Tomorrow is the day to seriously negotiate salary. I also want to add, I'm actually, I also work for the district, and I'm offended every single time that I have to come to a meeting like this and ask to get a raise for things that I shouldn't have to ask to get a raise for. So please, as a parent and as a member or an employee of the district, please negotiate with us in a serious way. Thank you.
Thank you. Josby Galindo, followed by Sammy Lambert, followed by Kim Tilton. Welcome.
Good evening. Look to what level you stoop to. You've paid us less than the state minimum requires. We will not forget. You've limited the sitting room in the boardroom, no way. You've added actually a lot more chairs for all the district staff that you've hired. You've moved teachers' public comment later into the evening. This is a time of giving thanks. Is this how you thank your teachers? These teachers need to go and give their students 100% tomorrow, not 55%. Superintendent Maldonado, you've not allowed us to come and present our teacher petition, which is 611 educators strong. Claiming it causes safety issues, the only thing this petition may be causing is fear within those housed in this building. We will not be deterred. Our unity, our solidarity will withstand your poor effort to try to create fear, uncertainty, and division amongst our educators. Look around, more and more teachers are showing up at every board meeting. We will not be deterred. Students deserve teachers that can afford to stay in SB. Create a competitive salary schedule that retains and attracts highly qualified educators, classified staff, and all the necessary staff students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sammy Lambert and Ms. Munoz. I teach dual enrollment chemistry to the incredible students at San Marcos High School. I am also one of three 2024 Santa Barbara County Distinguished New Educators. This year, my colleague Ryan Helsel and I were awarded this honor by the county after being recommended by our colleagues and our principals. Because I am a data-driven and curious scientist, I went back to view the other distinguished new educators who have previously won this award and came across some interesting findings. In the last 10 years, 11 educators from our Santa Barbara Unified School District have been awarded this title, including this year's two honorees. Of those 11, only four are still currently teaching in this district, including this year's two honorees. Why did they all leave? I suspect it's because you've proven you don't actually value your educators. Those distinguished educators took their talents to other districts who are willing to invest in them the way they invest in their students and their community. You leverage the love and generosity we have to go above and beyond for our students against our salary. Your budget bottom line is more important to you than retaining qualified and distinguished educators. We deserve better, our students deserve better, our community deserves better. My kids, my students deserve to thrive in their high school community in which they don't have to get to know new teachers, their trusted adults, every year because their old trusted adults keep leaving. If you don't change the priorities of this district, you're going to keep losing distinguished educators, and the kids will be the ones who suffer.
Thank you.
So, to close, I ask you, is your bottom line more important than the students of this district?
Thank you. Next, we have Kim Tilton, followed by Marina Torres Gross, followed by Rita Newhouse. Welcome.
Awesome. That's a coworker of mine, and I pray that she stays because she's the best teacher I've seen in my whole career. At the last board meeting, Superintendent Maldonado presented Every Child Award. During this report, she shared some winners that have been doing everything for every child every day. I went back to my campus and thanked one of these winners, and he was like, "What are you talking about? What award?" He didn't even know. That he had one? That's weird. And so I went investigating, and I found another employee from my school who had won at a previous board meeting. They were informed by an all-district email at 4:00 PM the day that they won. So they didn't actually know they won until, again, another employee told them the next day. Weeks later, that person received a picture of a screenshot from the PowerPoint for the award. The other person, I'm still checking in with him every week, he hasn't received anything. And I tell you this story because we have a big problem, and that's that our district is performative. And what I mean by that is their behavior and their actions are performative. They're putting on a performance for you so that you can believe a narrative that they appreciate their teachers, that they're celebrating them. But they didn't have the time, energy, or effort to even tell the people that they whipped up on this PowerPoint that they had won, to invite them to the board meeting to be celebrated by their peers? And hey, we didn't vote for them. I'm pretty sure our principal was just told to give a name and a face.
Thank you. Next, we have Marina Torres Gross, followed by Rita Newhouse. Okay. Welcome.
Hello. We, as teachers, are asked to get to know each of our students and their families. And as we meet here tonight, I feel it's important for members of the board and the superintendent to get to know the teachers' stories as well. My name is Marina Torres Gross. I am a native of Santa Barbara. Didn't just arrive. I have lived here my entire life. My family goes back five generations here. I am a product of local schools, attending Franklin Schools, Santa Barbara Junior High, Santa Barbara High, Go Dawns, and UCSB. I have a BA in history from UCSB, a teaching credential from Cal State Northridge, as well as ECE units that allow me to be a preschool teacher. I love teaching some of our youngest learners. People say, "How do you do it?" I just, I love it. However, we are grossly underpaid and very much overworked. We have virtually no prep time. I carry on in a family tradition as both my parents taught for Santa Barbara Unified. My father, and I'm doing this in his memory, taught for 33 years at Santa Barbara High. My mother taught for 22 years as a teacher and librarian at Franklin. I'm proud to carry on in their profession. However, my parents were able to raise me comfortably in Santa Barbara on two teacher salaries. It's not the same for me. It is not. So I request that you invest in our future by providing teachers with adequate pay to live in this town.
Thank you. Next, we have Rita Newhouse, followed by Maggie Light. If Maggie can queue up. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rita Newhouse Sagletti, but most people just call me Rita. I teach at Santa Barbara High School. I teach kids, special education students, who can't decode, which means they don't know their, all of their vowel sounds and all of their consonant letter sounds. I teach them single words. Forget about content, we got to go to that level. Single words. We start with one syllable, then we move on to multi-syllable, and we go from there. And thank goodness, this program has made some difference to some kids. Last year, I was able to participate in a program where I helped the fundraiser make $30,000. And I would just like to feel, and I've given my heart, I have worked in this district for 24 years. My brother works in this district, over 10. My father was in this district over 30, maybe 40 years. He taught at La Cumbra, Dos Pueblos, San Marcos. Our family has given blood, sweat, and tears to this district. Remember, we are people. We are not just numbers. SBTA is looking forward to the opening of negotiations, and we hope you guys come to the table and really negotiate a fair contract.
Thank you. We have Maggie Light, followed by Ryan Seibolski, followed by Christina Manalay. Welcome.
Welcome. We are in the business of learning, but we have learned, we have not learned much about teamwork. The pamphlet referred to as a book titled Every Child, Every Chance, Every Day is a 455-word list of platitudes that reminds staff and teachers that the admin and board do not know what's going on in the classroom nor how to spend their time. While admin points to the pamphlet as a catalyst for change, staff and teachers are working their butts off juggling rigorous academic teaching and the social-emotional needs of students, while picking up the pieces of admin's inability to sustain equitable grading practices, provide effective EML curriculum and instruction, give support to new teachers, conduct SARB meetings, and send out attendance letters, just to name a few. We're doing our jobs, but I don't see evidence the admin is doing theirs. If you want us to rediscover the joy of teaching, you need to provide substantive support, follow-up on trainings, and equitable pay. You are partners in learning, not overseers. As a team, as a team, the issue of salary and benefits should not require demands and confrontation. It should be the logical outcome of real knowledge and real accountability.
Thank you. Next, we have Ryan Seibolski, followed by Christina Manalay, followed by Magda Barnes. Welcome.
Hello. This is not my son. He's at home where I should be. This is a student of mine. I am a PE teacher at Monroe Elementary. I do not see my sped students. Where are they? They're in their classrooms, not being included with the rest of my students because we do not have paras to support them. Why? Because they're not paid well. Why do teachers leave? Because we're not paid well. It's a never-ending story, so why are we still here? I don't understand. You guys are all looking at us with this blank stare. What's going on up there? Are you guys thinking about what you're going to do tomorrow? We sure hope so. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Every time you said my name wrong, that was a big blow. It's Manali, thank you. Esteemed board members, why is there no empathy left for teachers? Cutting our time to speak is a stab in the back. Even more so to hear funds from COVID that we rightfully deserve were waved away as a complete insult to our work ethic and dedication to this profession, especially in a time of increased need. Teachers deserve better. Making the decision to work to contract is an incredibly difficult one for both elementary and secondary teachers. To not send a letter of recommendation to a student for college, to not accommodate parent conferences after hours, to not plan or prep outside these hours, is extremely challenging and above all devastating. This decision to work to contract is heartbreaking because we chose this profession to support students in achieving both academic and personal success. But when you hear that music programs are being cut, office staff are leaving due to exploitation, when the lack of teacher retention makes it difficult to find trusted adults on campus to talk to, I don't see how that can be treated as a success. Forcing educators to decide between spending their unpaid time taking care of their own mental health or prepping for their classroom shows exactly how much you care about us. Give us daily teacher-directed, protected prep time, elementary and secondary. I mentioned last time that I spoke, and I meant it when I said that if your policies do not change, you will be also blacklisting yourself as a place to work, not just for distinguished veterans, but also the fabulous new hires who know this position is worth fighting for.
Thank you.
All right, acknowledge you're getting a batch of teachers who care about their mental health. We are a new breed, and it's time for you to also adapt, just like we are having to adapt. If you refuse to take care of us, we will fight for leaders who will.
Next, we have Magda Barnes, followed by Finnegan Wright, followed by Kelly Mendesh. Welcome.
My name is Magda, and I was fortunate enough to grow up in Santa Barbara. The years the district chose not to afford art teachers before there was ICAN to pay for it, my mom paid for art supplies and taught art to my elementary school classes. Not easy for a single mom, but she felt it was important. Eventually, I grew up to be an art teacher. I have not been able to attend board meetings because I, like so many other teachers, have a second job. We work at restaurants, gyms, tutoring centers, odd jobs to stay afloat. I took off tonight and forwarded money to speak to you. With previous leadership, while I have not always agreed with everything, I have felt that we are on the same team, that we're working on the same side for the same goal to educate the students of Santa Barbara. The actions of this board and superintendent have made it abundantly clear that we are not on the same team, that you think we are dispensable, and therefore you can't possibly be for students. You have paid for new positions at this office, along with coaches, to teach you how to do the positions you were hired for. Why will you refuse to continue to pay teachers at least the cost of living for Santa Barbara's? You want equity for your students, but you do not want equity for your teachers. Please come tomorrow to the negotiation table with a substantial offer. I hope this keeps you up at night because it keeps us up at night, wondering how we're going to pay for rent, if our car is broken, what will we do? Will we be able to retire at 70, 75, or will we be forced to move in with our family members, with a roommate, or will we be part of a silver tsunami and end up homeless at that age?
Thank you. Finnegan Wright, followed by Kelly Mendesh, followed by Joel Block.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Finnegan Wright. I am a senior at Dos Pueblos High School. It's been about a year and a half since I've been at this board, and last time I was here, I had some pretty positive views about the board. I actually canvassed for some of you, and I had some pretty friendly conversations with Dr. Maldonado. I heard encouraging talk about listening to student perspectives and creating a nurturing education for the students. It was exciting, and I was proud to be a member of SB Unified. The issue is, to have a good education, you have to have good educators. And these teachers around me in the district are fantastic educators, but then I start to see some leaving. Every single year, talent dripping away from our district, not because they don't want to be here for us, but because they can't. They're overworked, they're underpaid. You, the district, aren't even affording them the bare minimum they need to live in our city, in this district. I hear more and more about the utter mistreatment of these people who have made me who I am today, and it's frankly infuriating. I'm sure it's complicated, I'm sure the deficits are complex, but they, our teachers in many ways are the bottom line. Us students can't thrive unless our teachers do too. They bust their backs helping us students not because they get paid well, they certainly don't. They bust their backs because they care about us, they care about our futures. It's about time the district starts caring about their futures too and actually paying them what they really deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Mendesh, followed by Joel Block, followed by Deborah Reed. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kelly Mendesh, and I'm a preschool teacher in the district and a proud member of SBTA. But I am not here tonight to speak as a teacher, I'm here to speak as a parent. My daughter is a senior at San Marcos, and she has teachers who are her trusted adults. But those special relationships with those teachers, they were hard. They were hard to build. They took time and energy and effort, and they were built mostly outside of class because her teachers go the extra mile and put in effort with her. Her sculpture teacher opens his classroom every day at lunch and eats with students that don't feel comfortable eating anywhere else. Mr. Vogel does that on his own time. He makes her feel safe, he makes her feel like she belongs, and I am profoundly grateful to him. Her environmental studies teacher took a group of 40 teens, 40 teens, to Santa Cruz Island for three days. Ms. Tilton built relationships, and Lucy learned so much, and she found her passion. This experience was life-changing, and my daughter, it was life-changing for my daughter, and it was far beyond Ms. Tilton's workday, but she was there and she showed up for my daughter. If you want teachers to build relationships, you need to pay them enough so that they can focus on students and not on how they are going to make rent or pay bills. I urge you to prioritize teachers' salaries so that we can attract and retain quality educators who have the bandwidth to be there for their students. Students deserve that. Teachers are the cornerstone of every child, every chance, every day. As a parent, I ask that you pay them what they deserve for making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joel Block, followed by Deborah Reed. Welcome.
Good evening. Over the years, I have come to know many of you on the board and at the district, and that is why it is so frustrating that you are either ignorant of or uncaring about the teachers' level of anger and distrust of the school board and especially the district. Last year, the SBTA begged you to reopen negotiations on salary. This was completely refused. Instead, you, in what was perceived by teachers as a way to counter bad publicity, unilaterally gave a 2% increase with an extra $1,000 stipend. Now, I am near the top of the salary scale, and when you take into account the current level inflation and my increase in healthcare costs, my annual net gain is a whopping $875. If you use my salary as an average for all teachers, which it is not, and the cost of the district was about $2 million, this in a year when the district took in an additional $19 million in revenue, in a year when the district added administrative staff positions, including one with a salary $274,000, in a year when to add insult to injury, the district violated ed code and underpaid teachers by over $6 million. Is it any wonder we are angry and distrustful? It is time to stop deposturing. Negotiate now openly, honestly, on all issues, including salary and healthcare.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Reed, followed by Ashley Cornelius. Welcome.
My name's Deborah Reed. I'm here on behalf of my coworker Lisa Gorbak. Ms. Gorbak is one of our Santa Barbara High School's academic counselors and is home taking care of her daughter Leila this evening while her husband is working a side job again. Families splitting time to address childcare, families with alternating work schedules, families being unable to gather together in the evenings, all of these are common occurrences in Santa Barbara, our home, which is according to a September 9- Our home, which is according to a September 9, 2023 CNBC article citing the Economic Research Institute, "Santa Barbara, a city where the cost of living is 57% above the national average." All that being said, my colleague Ms. Gorbak would like to ask, why is it at the end of the meetings, when the board is asking clarifying questions of presenters and talk about things said during public comment, are they only bringing up questions or comments that were presented by their leadership members? Questions about programs like EML or college readiness plans? Where are the questions asking or commenting publicly about the public comment teacher voices? Why bother asking leadership staff about these programs when we know the programs they are presenting about are only as effective as the site teachers and certificated staff implementing them? The same people who are voicing concerns about working conditions, retention, and staffing. What is the purpose of having a program if there is no one present to implement it? And as an aside, this is something that I would like to say for myself. The classroom around the corner from me had a temporary teacher for the entirety of term one teaching Spanish to students on a computer program. Those students ended up in my classroom on a daily basis looking for something to do, someone to pay attention to them, asking for snacks. The person who replaced that person at the beginning of term one lasted two days. Those students came to my room and said to me, she was here, she packed up her microwave and left. I guess she didn't like us. I like them though.
Next, we have Ashley Cornelius. Welcome.
Thank you, board members and Dr. Maldonado. My name is Ashley Cornelius. Tomorrow, I will be part of the team representing our educators in Santa Barbara Unified. I want to give you some insight on how we came up with our proposals. Our priority is to keep and attract our amazing teachers so that our students receive the highest quality education. As has already been established, we are losing teachers to neighboring districts. The only way to keep our teachers and attract other teachers in our district is to give them a viable option to be able to pay the rent here in Santa Barbara and also buy groceries and pay the electric bill. As amazing as our students and families are here in SB, there are also amazing students in Santa Maria and Oxnard and Ventura. We have to make our district a viable choice for our teachers and that is gonna require a significant change in the way that you create our budget. Providing a living wage for the teachers and staff who interact with our students on a daily basis must be the foundation of the budget. If we want to make our district student-focused, everything else must be filled in after. If you've ever heard of the rocks, pebbles, and sand method of filling a bucket, the teachers and staff at our schools must be the first rock to go into that budget. Maintaining safe spaces for our students to attend class must be a rock that goes in the bucket. If you choose students first in our budget, then maintaining small class sizes must be a rock in the budget. Then we start filling in the spaces with our pebbles, those who keep the paychecks coming out, those who fix the tiles in the floor, to keep our toilets from flooding. Then whatever space is left in the budget is used for new curriculum. After all, what good is it to buy new books if we don't have a live certificated teacher to use with our students? Whatever money is left over is used to pay for conferences and consultants. After all, why spend money to train and educate teachers if they have to leave in two to five years because they can't pay for groceries and rent? We have the income, increased income from property taxes that is increasing. We have fewer students. That means we can spend more money on every student that walks through our doors. Let's give them an education that is worthy of the great dream of public education for us.
Thank you. Next, we have Sean O'Brien, followed by Anamony Metta. I'm sorry, I know I mispronounced that. Please forgive me. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Sean O'Brien. I am a certified teacher and I'm also a parent of a Harding Hawk. Go Hawks. Yes. I had prepared notes, but it's, I'm just sitting here with my jaw to the floor right now. That mission statement's staring at me the whole night. And it says, "We prepare students for a world that is yet to be created." But I can't read that without adding words to that in light of everything I'm hearing tonight. We cannot prepare students for a world that is yet to be created if we do not have the absolute best educators. If we do not pay them and attract and retain them, there's no way we can make that mission statement that's sitting right behind your backs right there. I invite you to look at it. It's been staring at me all night. It's your mission statement. All right, no takers. So... Yeah, I don't know what to say. You are all having a cultural crisis right now. All of the things that we've heard from our students, the lack of support, the parents who I'm seeing fill in for your paras in our kindergarten classes, where our students are trying to learn, but it's really hard to learn when things are being knocked over and thrown by kids who really need support but don't have it and those parents aren't qualified to give it to them? I hope tomorrow that you do the right thing. It's not a negotiation, it's just say yes.
Thank you.
And then start rebuilding your culture.
Thank you. Welcome.
How does this work? Um, all right. Y'all are really sad, actually. Why? Everyone is very depressed here. Anyway, I didn't feel like preparing for this, so I didn't. And I didn't write any notes. Why do you guys have notes? Why do any of you have notes? Teachers have to prepare for classes like this, I'm pretty sure. I obviously didn't, but when teachers aren't paid for preparing for things and it's assumed that, oh, they're just working the hours we pay them for, we don't need to pay them more money, you get classes that are like this amazing presentation I'm about to give. I got a smile there. You think that like teachers just magically materialize lessons off the internet? Or like your books that you give them that don't really mean anything? Like seriously, most of what I've learned is just talking to teachers and asking questions. Nothing like on the textbooks actually does much. Yeah, like, I'm just very confused at how this works when you guys think that this will just happen. Like, I didn't prepare it. This is a weird presentation, but like... I just love not studying for tests. Teachers need to study for their classes as well and that doesn't happen if you don't pay them the money to like have time outside of school to do things and they have to work second jobs and/or have coaching in their alleged prep periods or like everything else that they do to have money to like sustain themselves. It's, why? Why?
Our, our last public commenter is May S. May S. Thank you. Careful, because they have wheels.
Good evening. As a student myself, the playground feels unsafe because there's not enough yard duties, because you guys aren't paying enough and people are getting bullied. I love my teachers and they're, they deserve to have enough money to live a good life. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you. That's all the public comment.
Okay, public comments on G1. Dr. Beccio, if you'll come to G2, we're still in the public hearing. The second reading of Sunshine at Santa Barbara Unified School District Contract Negotiations for 2024-27 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association.
Thank you. G2 is a public hearing for, for the public to know the Sunshine Articles Santa Barbara Unified is proposing for their contract negotiations. So this is an open public hearing.
So we don't have any requests to speak on G2. Additional comments so we can close this hearing at this time. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move to our action agenda. Dr. Beccio, I think you're up there. Well, H1, approval of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association proposal for the successor's contract negotiations for the 2024-27 collective bargaining agreement with the Santa Barbara Unified School District.
That's correct. And H1 and H2 are both statutory requirements that the board approve. H1 is the Santa Barbara Teachers Association proposal for successor contract negotiations, which outlines the articles they intend to open and negotiate. And so it's before you for your approval.
No requests to speak on this item. No requests to speak, board members, comments, and/or questions. Again, it's a statutory requirement. Okay, so May have a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve the SPTA proposal for the successor contract negotiations for 24-27 collective bargaining agreement with the Santa Barbara Unified School District.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, been motioned second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Dr. Beccio, H2, approval of Santa Barbara Unified School District's proposal for the successor contract negotiations for 2024-27 collective bargaining agreement with Santa Barbara Teachers Association.
Thank you. I'd like the board to consider this for approval tonight, which will then allow for the negotiations to move forward tomorrow.
Okay. Here are no requests to speak on this item. May have a motion for approval.
I move, I move approval of Santa Barbara Unified School District proposal for the successor contract negotiations for the 24-27 collective bargaining agreement with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association.
I'll second.
Been motioned second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can we close that door there? As they're continuing? The back door, because they're still here.
Yeah.
Oh, you know, great, thank you. Just they're still hearing it, so I appreciate that. Just want to make sure that we can hear folks coming up. Okay, so now we'll move to H3, approval of Resolution 23-24-16 to open enrollment for PARs, supplementary retirement plan, and approval of agreement for public agency retirement systems. So we want to hold on a minute so people are clearing the room so you can make sure we're hearing the presentation. Go ahead and give me the thumbs up when you're ready. Folks, we still need to conduct business. If you could keep moving out, continue your conversation outside of this room, unless you're gonna be part of this. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Fernandez.
Okay. Thank you very much. So tonight, we have a very exciting thing to have you consider. And I have a gentleman who is going to come speak to us from PARs. Right behind me. This is Mr. Dennis Yu. I hope I pronounced it correctly. Who is the executive vice principal? Vice, excuse me, of the PARs organization. So tonight, we're going to talk to you a little bit about offering potentially opening enrollment to offer a retirement incentive to employees who are eligible to retire. So I would like to turn the stage over to Mr. Yu.
All right, good evening. Madam Board President, members of the board, my name again is Dennis Yu, Executive Vice President with PARs. And I'm pleased this evening to present information to the board about a potential retirement incentive for your district's consideration. I have a short presentation and will be happy to answer any questions afterwards. A little bit about our company. Our company was founded about 40 years ago to provide early retirement plan services for school districts. We have more than 300 school districts throughout California that we've provided these services, including your district, back in 2013. We have implemented more than 2,000 different retirement plans throughout the state and have retired tens of thousands of employees throughout the years. Our company is headquartered in Orange County, California, where all of the administration of our programs occur. The next page just shows a sampling of some of the 300-plus school districts that have done early retirement plans, again, throughout the state. So a retirement incentive is simply a one-time financial incentive that the district offers to eligible employees to retire basically a little bit earlier than they otherwise would have. So for the board's consideration, this plan would offer an incentive program where the employees receive a 60-day enrollment period to decide whether or not they want to take the incentive offer or not. And so they have 60 days to consider it and during that 60-day period, they have to submit an irrevocable letter of resignation to be considered eligible for the program. And so the benefit of this program is that the district can see who actually wants to take advantage of the program. And then PARs can then conduct an analysis to determine whether or not there's enough fiscal savings to make the plan worthwhile for the district or not. And so based on the results, the district can either proceed with the program or could actually cancel the program. So the benefit really is that the district always has the hindsight of, 2020 hindsight vision to determine whether or not a plan makes sense or not for the district. And again, if the plan doesn't make sense, the plan would actually, could actually be canceled. So historically, at PARs, we've had about a 95% success rate with our programs. The incentive offer that's being contemplated is called 90% of final pay. So to, the way to quantify that is that you would simply take the employee's salary and multiply that by 90% and that would be the amount of the incentive offer that the district would be making. So to make the math easy, let's say a teacher is making $100,000. You would take 90% of that amount. So the ultimate cost of that program would be $90,000 to the district. The district doesn't contribute that directly to the employee in cash. What the district actually does is purchase an annuity through an insurance company called Pacific Life Insurance Company to provide certain tax-favored advantages for both the district and for the employees. So in purchasing the annuity, each employee would be able to receive different annuity payout options that would be paid in addition to what they would receive from either CalPERS or CalSTRS. So there's three different types of lifetime payout options. There's 11 different types of fixed-term payout options. So the employee essentially is able to select the financial option that makes the most sense for them. The cost to the district, it doesn't matter which option the employee takes, the cost to the district is ultimately, again, based on that 90% of final pay. On the next slide, just shows a sample representation of what 90% of final pay might look like for the average teacher or for the average classified non-management employee. So when the offer is actually made, each employee who's eligible for the plan would actually receive a customized page like this that will show the different payout options that would be available if they were to take advantage of the early retirement incentive program. So part of the process at PARs that we do employ is to try to calculate the fiscal impact of a retirement incentive program. And ultimately, what we want to try to see is whether or not there could be any net savings as a result of the program. And so the way to kind of think about it is, at PARs, we look at two different scenarios. We look at the savings if you do a plan compared to savings of not doing a plan at all. Because if you don't do any plan, potentially the district would receive what's called natural attrition, where sometimes people would retire normally on their own. So the goal with PARs is to hopefully try to exceed the savings of that of natural attrition. So again, if we can do that, there would, we would be able to generate a net savings to the district. On the next page gets a little bit into the plan design of the program. And so this plan would be primarily targeting two different groups, your certificated non-management employees and your classified non-management employees. So the eligibility requirements of the program are basically the employee has to be at least, have at least five years of district service and would need to be eligible to retire under either CalPERS or CalSTRS. So there's minimum age and service requirements that would... So there's minimum age and service requirements that would be required to be able to participate in this program. And then to, the other requirement is obviously, the employee would need to resign from the district effective at the end of the 2324 school year in order to get this incentive offer. The benefit program, again, as we mentioned a little bit earlier, is 90% of final pay. With respect to replacement salaries, in order to conduct our fiscal calculations, we have to assume certain salaries that you would be hiring in potential replacement employees. So what we did look at is your historical hiring trends as far as what you, where you've been bringing in your teachers and your classified non-management employees. So for purposes of this analysis, we're looking at approximately $78,000 for your classified, I'm sorry, your teachers, and then about replacement at step three for your classified non-management employees. We do also factor in healthcare costs, because if you do have employees that retire a little bit earlier, then potentially, the district would actually have to pay more years of retiring healthcare expenses. So we do also factor that cost into our calculation as well. And lastly, we, you also have to factor in that cost of that 90% of final pay incentive as well. And again, that amount is actually paid over a five-year timeframe, so that, again, the district doesn't pay for it all upfront in one year, you can spread out that cost over that five-year period. The next section, we're going to get into a little bit of the details about how many people are actually eligible for the program and PARs' initial projection of how many people we think might actually take advantage of the program. And so in looking at your certificated non-management group, there's 162 employees currently that meet eligibility requirements. Among your classified non-management employees, you have 249. So in total, the total universe is 411 employees. We're looking at approximately 90 of those 411 employees taking advantage of the plan, which is slightly more than 22% of your retirement-eligible employees. So we don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know exactly how many people are going to take advantage of the program, but again, this is just our best guess based on 40 years of experience doing these type of programs. So the next couple of slides, what we're trying to just show you is what we think the potential fiscal impact of the plan might be of the retirement incentive, again, based on, in this case, for your certificated non-management employees, we're looking at approximately 42 employees retiring out of this group. And what we're trying to show you is the five-year net fiscal impact at various replacement levels. And what this chart is showing me is that in order to make a plan work for your district, there will have to be some level of non-replacement with respect to this program. So for example, at the 90% replacement level, we are, we're projecting approximately $404,000 of savings over a five-year timeframe. So again, that assumes that if you have 42 people retire, you wouldn't replace 4.2 positions at that 90% replacement level. And if you're able to not replace every retiring position, if you go down the rows, you can see that there would be more savings to the district. The next slide shows you the fiscal impact of the classified non-management employees. And so in this group, we're projecting that 48 of the classified non-management employees would potentially participate in this program. With this plan, you do need a greater level of non-replacement of positions in order to break even. So we would have to look at approximately a replacement level in excess of 90% replacement, so closer to 80% replacement. So for example, if you had 48 employees retire out of this group, you didn't replace 9.6 positions. Over that five-year period, we'd be looking at savings of approximately $1.3 million. And so what PARs will do is, you know, again, these are just initial estimates based on your current demographics, but really, the best numbers that we'll get is if you make this, extend this offer, we see who's actually interested in signing up. We're then able to recalculate all of these numbers, and then based on those employees that take the program, you can then determine what level of replacement would be required. So again, if you have a situation where every position needs to be replaced, then potentially, this plan may not work from a fiscal standpoint. But if there are certain positions that may not have to be backfilled, then that's when savings could occur for the district. The last page of my presentation is the proposed timeline of how we would proceed going forward. So included in the agenda is a resolution to basically open up what we call the enrollment window, that 60-day period for employees to decide if they want to take the offer or not. If the board does approve, we would immediately start mailing out enrollment packets that, to all 400-plus employees that are eligible for the program, so that they can decide whether or not they want to take advantage of the program. We would come back out to your district on a couple of different occasions to do group orientation meetings, where we help educate your employees about the benefits of this program, and they would then look at, you know, discuss with their financial advisors, talk with Calpers and Calsters to see if it makes sense for them to take advantage of the retirement incentive. In middle of January, we would come back out to do individualized counseling, so that we can help your employees on a one-to-one basis determine, again, whether or not this plan works. We're proposing that the enrollment window closes on January 19th of 2024, so again, that gives the employees that 60-day timeframe. So on the evening of January 19th, we know exactly the names and positions of those that want to take advantage of this incentive offer, and then we're then able to calculate, again, that better analysis of the fiscal impact to your district. We would then bring this back to your board on your January 30th meeting, where you can then look at the actual impact of the program, and then at that meeting, this board is able to decide whether to proceed with the program or to rescind or cancel the program. Assuming that the plan does go forward, employees would resign by the end of the school year, no later than June 30th of 2024. The district would make its first contribution to the PARs program in early July, and the participants would then receive their first benefit check from PARs starting on August 1st of 2024. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you for your presentation. We have one request to speak on this item. Oh, she's bringing it up to her.
Karen McBride. Welcome.
Good evening, good evening, Dr. Maldonado, members of the board. I'm speaking to you as a community member, but also someone who is a staunch supporter of teachers and, and a responsible school district. And I just want to put forward a couple of questions that came up in my mind, and maybe they did in yours too, but whether or not they'll be asked tonight, I just want to make sure that I put them forward. First of all, when I see this, let me clarify something. Do I have 90 seconds or three minutes now that we're down to a limited number of people?
90 seconds.
Okay. You're asking people to write an irrevocable resignation based on a plan that might not, in the words of Dennis, I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name. Yu, okay, I knew it was, almost there. Quote, "to determine whether or not this plan works," and that wouldn't happen until January. The timeline for submitting resignations in this school district typically starts at the beginning of December and culminates in January. So a teacher would have to make that irrevocable resignation and then not know whether or not they're actually going to get this benefit, because you might not have enough people that sign up for it. Okay, we also might still be in the middle of negotiations, and people won't know if they're going to get a healthy raise that's going to enable them to continue to work at a higher rate. So there's a lot of ifs and risks here for the employee, but not for the board, not for the school district, okay? Also, I've read some of these documents prior to the meeting today. There's a mention of a $5,000 fee that the school district has to pay if the program doesn't go forward, but there's no cost that's clear to me in what I read. How much is it going to cost if the plan does go forward? In addition...
You can finish your thought.
Thank you. Less than, when you're talking about less than 100% replacement, really what you're saying is the elimination of jobs. So let's be clear and call it what it is. And you're already struggling to keep classrooms filled with certificated staff, so...
Thank you.
This seems a risky proposition to me.
Thank you.
Okay, so here no additional comments. Thank you for your comments. Mr., you might want to stand up just in case the board has some questions. So I just want to make a comment. As I think about this, as I was thinking about this, I know we're trying to work all ways of making sure that we are respecting our teachers, trying to do that, but I, my concern is just hearing this hour and a half of sentiment in this room just a few minutes ago that just concluded, to now bring this up, that wasn't planned, but I'm just saying, we being mindful of the time that we're in and what we just heard, that's really important, that we're respecting the sentiment that was, for this last hour, and yet that was tonight, but there's been, so, but I'm just, and I don't want to be disrespectful of what we're trying to do, and I know we're trying to be very creative of how we're doing things and how we can, you know, be healthy and still keep folks and do all those different things, but I just don't know that the timing is right, just given the sentiment that we just went through. I just, I just need to say that in the comment, you know, as a comment and a concern, more concerned than a comment. So, Ms. Alvarez.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. My apologies for being late today, and Dr. Maldonado and staff, my apologies for not sending questions in advance. Time, just a lot of conflicting situations came up. Even though I understand the intent of the fiscal benefits that this may bring, it seems to me that is extremely insensitive to our teachers, especially to our senior teachers, because no matter how we frame it, no matter how it's packaged, the message that is given is that their, their experience, what they've given to this district is not being honored. And I personally do not agree with that. I, I believe that our teachers need to be honored in their experience, their commitment. A 60-day timeframe, it's so rushed. I, I do not know if anybody knew that this was even being considered. I don't know if SBTA leadership was aware of this. If I was sitting on the other side with the teachers, I would be thinking, what happened? We're talking about better communication, we're talking about building a partnership. Is this happening? And those are questions that I do not have the answer to, but I do want to find the answers. I also am interested in finding out, as a board member, I would like to look at a really thorough staff report. How many positions are we thinking that we may not be filling for next year? Are we overstaffed, or has there, has there been a high turnover? I do not have that information myself, that I would need to find this out. I would also be interested in, I know that in your slide, it was shown that Santa Barbara Unified participated in PARs before, and I do recall that, because the former CBO, of course, my former colleague, I remember actually going to meetings with her about PARs. So I'd be interested in how successful we were when we offered that position, did we achieve the savings that we said we were going to do? I'd be interested in finding that out. I would also want to know, before actually signing the, on the dotted line, I would want to know, is, is there even an interest? Do teachers want us to consider this? There may be teachers that are on the fence, and they're saying, yes, I'm, I'm ready, I'll do this, and it'll be a benefit. There may not. So those are my comments and embedded questions, and I don't expect answers tonight, because like I said, I didn't ask them ahead of time, but I do, would like to have those questions, that information brought forward in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo, no comments. Additional comments, Mr. Banning.
I'd share some of those questions about, about timing and such. One of the other questions I was going to ask, if you, if you proceed with something like this, and you get the resignations that you expect, over the long term, what that's really created is kind of an artificial valley in the, in the scattergram, if you will. You have fewer people at the top of the schedule because of that. What does that look like over time, and how does that affect the change in, in the, in the savings as you realize that there may be a, an issue of, of distribution of where people go on the salary schedule? I say that with full knowledge, that our scattergram is very, very, very highly skewed to the top. So just some questions around that. There have been some really good questions here. Are we going to have a chance to hear responses, or?
Yes, we want to give time, I just, you know, if we want a direct question, I just wanted to make sure I'm getting any...
You're hearing them all.
Yes.
Yes, I certainly, I share similar concerns about the timing of this and the awareness. I, you know, I know that we have our board agenda is, is public, but I just wonder if, also, if the teachers are aware of it, and just, it just doesn't feel right.
Okay, so some of those questions might be directed to staff. We'll start with you, Superintendent, maybe additional staff may need to weigh in.
Yeah, I will try to address the time, your timing concerns and the involvement of SBTA and teachers.
Yes.
So as you know, the timing is, for us, as Mr. Yu said, is involving the analysis of where we are with the budget as we prepare for negotiations. And as we discussed before, the skewed number of teachers that we have is important. We know that, as was stated in public comment, at this time of the year, we would be getting resignations, or announcements of retirements, anyway. This would actually incentivize and provide additional funding for teachers who have already signaled, at least a few to me, that they are planning to retire regardless of this being in place or not, or potentially even more. We wanted to be able to explore, as was stated by Mr. Yu's presentation, that we are exploring the possibility. This is not something that would definitely be done without some conversation, without some analysis that we would bring back to you all at the end of the process. And I do want to just ask a clarifying question to Mr. Yu on the irrevocable letter that they would sign. That would be with the knowledge that it is pending board approval, so it's not that they would be held to it...
Correct.
...if it wasn't approved by the board.
Yes, if the plan is revoked by the board, the resignation letters are automatically rescinded at that point in time.
Right. So the other question I heard was about the staffing, so definitely, that's something we can bring back to the board as part of everything that we will be engaging in in the next couple of months. This does not, I don't think it's been a secret that we did invest a lot of money in extra positions with the ESAR money that we have, and we have mentioned in previous presentations, both adopted budget, 45-day report, budget report, that we do expect that there will be some people that will no longer have the same jobs, given the ESAR money that we've invested in those positions. So that's another part of the consideration of ways that we can mitigate some of those additional positions we have carried. And lastly, we had, we do have a side letter with SBTA that was signed at the end of last year with regards to class size, that has kept us at a higher than normal, or higher than our previous contract class size numbers. So we are overstaffed, that, that is, to Ms. Alvarez's question, I know you asked for specifics, and I'm giving specifics, but that is something that we have talked about in previous budget presentations. As far as surveying teachers, the process is to survey teachers. So through the enrollment process, is, is my understanding that that is when we would actually be asking for them to tell us. I think it would be difficult to say to a teacher, would you agree, without them actually seeing what the deal would look like. That would be, that would probably not feel right either, and that would be disingenuous on our part to try to get a resignation without some kind of offer that's a true offer with what that benefit would look like. So in many ways... So in many ways, I, I share the board's concerns around, you know, how would the teachers feel? What would they want to know? Well, I think if I was a teacher on the other end, I would want to know, well, what does that deal look like? And that's what this process would allow us to do. I think I covered all the questions. Is there anything else that I may have missed? Or is there, is there anything you guys want to add?
That was very well done. Yes, pretty much, we, we know that the side letter ends at the end of this year, which means we would go back to our regular contracted numbers for class sizes, which means that we are overstaffed with teachers. We are also overstaffed with classified employees who we, we needed during this time during COVID, and those COVID funding streams have now, are now ending. So we've talked about this in our board meetings, we've talked about this in our budgets. It shouldn't be any surprise to anyone, because we've mentioned it over and over again, that these funding streams are ending, and we are now going to have to figure out what to do with the extra employees that we have been paying with one-time funds.
Karen, hold on one second, just, we want to, just a point of order. Can you finish your thought and then?
I think that was pretty much it.
Okay. Did you answer all those questions from there? Ward, did you get your answers, just, just to be point of order? So did you have additional questions to expand upon?
Yes, actually, I do. When my comment about, do the teachers know that this is being considered? And the answer was, they will know, because this is, will give them the survey. That was not, that is not the right answer that I'm looking for. I do understand the process of PARs, and thank you, you did an excellent job. I'm, I'm familiar how it works. My, my concern, my question is, had we mentioned this to the teachers, that we are considering this, to say the district is considering a retirement incentive because we are overstaffed, this was, this will mitigate, potentially mitigate the need for layoffs, and this is what it entails? Are you interested, is this something that you are interested in? Yes, or no? This way, it doesn't come as a surprise, and it doesn't feel like we're trying, somebody's trying to get rid of somebody. That's, that's what I'm saying. How is it packaged? The result may be the same, but the packaging, the messaging is very, very important. And my, my concern right now, sitting here, is that I, from what I know, and I could be mistaken, maybe there's information that I do not have, I do not believe that we, and I'm included, have done the job of clarity to say to the teachers, to the classified staff, we are considering this because, 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 and these are the steps that we are going to take. That's, that's my biggest concern right now.
Additional comments? Or did you want to respond? If you want to speak, please put in a speaker slip. Yeah, so, yeah, just trying, I, I really think it really does come back to timing, and it does come back clarity and communication, and being respectful of that, and, and being mindful of that, because I, I was making notes about natural attrition, why not putting that first before, this would be like that next sentence, because you have that, that natural attrition, you know, with regards to just this timing in general. And so I, it does concern me that it hasn't been that clear.
Yeah.
I understand the intent, but the clarity and the understanding and the expectations of it has, has not been as clear, and I think that's what we're seeing. So I'm going to close public comment on this, on this item, so if you could bring this up, Brenda, thank you. So that we can conclude our business on this.
We have two additional public comments. Kim Tilton, followed by Brianna Serrato.
I just want to echo what Ms. Alvarez said. I'm on the executive board for the SBTA, and this is the first I'm hearing of it. And yeah, it's public for 72 hours while I was doing my job, so I didn't have time to go through all the presentations. I will tell you, this is going to land real bad. As someone who represents my fellow teachers, as someone who's been working for 12 years, I constantly mentor new teachers, because we have such a high turnover rate. So, yeah, it's a huge problem. Like, we need to maintain our most experienced staff. One of the issues we have right now with engagement and safety on our campus is because we have so many new teachers who are coming out of programs that are not as strong as they used to be, to be honest. And we're just struggling to mentor them, and they're trying to do their best, but getting rid of or incentivizing these teachers to retire is a dangerous game, because what you heard tonight is you won't have anyone to replacement, even at a 90% replacement rate. And when they say overstaffed because of a side letter, I can tell you, part of our bargaining will be class size again. So yeah, that side letter's up, but we're coming to the table, and that's going to be part of it. We can't keep our kids safe and make our classes bigger. You can't keep me safe. I was sexually harassed and debased by a student in my own classroom. So please, 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 please consider the value of our older teachers.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi again, Brianna Serrato. Thank you for letting us do the public comment, because I, I had a question and also a comment for Ms. Alvarez. So with regards to people being able to see it, I was researching a few nights ago, trying to look at the board meeting minutes from the last board meeting and also the agendas, and there are lots of links that go to nowhere on the board's website, especially when it comes to trying to find the agenda or trying to find the minutes. It's lots of click here, and that isn't an actual site anymore. I took screenshots, I just haven't had a chance to email, because I'm a parent, and I also work full-time, and I'm also on the oversight committee for the, I forget the new acronym, but combating anti-black racism. So I have all of these things on my plate. So it was 20 minutes of trying to just find the agenda for this meeting and also for the last meeting. And so that was that one comment of, the websites really need help. And then the other is also overstaffing of, I'm really shocked hearing overstaffing, because my daughter in fifth grade, I was there volunteering for Thursday folders, and there were all of these extra kids sitting on the floor in their classroom, and they were taking a test. And it turned out, it was because one of the fifth-grade teachers was out sick, and they couldn't find a sub. So they split that classroom into two other fifth-grade classrooms. So how is it that there's not enough staff when you can't fill positions, including sped and peer educators? And the class sizes already are having so much trouble. So again, didn't make sense on the oversight.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those comments, additional comments, and thank you for your comments and for this. So I, so board is certainly for, for discussion in terms of where we are with this. If I'm reading and hearing, I don't know that we're ready to move forward on it, and there's some additional things that need to happen before we do that, to consider that, both notifying folks, being clear about what we're doing, and, and what the benefits are, because I was looking at all this, what's the benefit versus the cost of this? And that's a, that's a human cost, as a respect cost as well, in terms of that, we're hearing all of those things, and we have to really take those into consideration, because in the end, there's no benefit for anybody if we don't get it right. It may not be the timing for it. No, I don't know the back, you know, in terms of how successful it was. But in this, it's, because we got to look at what's happening now, the timing, what's going on in our environment now. It doesn't sound like, you know, just based from comments and even just hearing today, and again, taking into consideration what comments were coming from our teachers today, that it's the right time to do it, at least not tonight. But I think there's additional information that we need to bring back to the board. We, board, I, I want you to weigh in, whether this is something we even want to consider right now. You know, just as something for, we need to discuss, so that we can give some direction to staff. Ms. Menos?
Yes, certainly, I would want to ask if it's possible to, you know, discuss this on a, at a different meeting? To give us the opportunity to, you know, to review it again, to think about it? And I don't know if, if December or January would be possible for this, or?
Yes, Mr. Wu said that, that it is possible to, to push it out even a couple of months for it to still meet the timeline for this year. If you want to go ahead.
Right. Yeah, the, the only issue, so we can actually push out the initial launch of the program to as late as your last board meeting in March. But the downside of that is that it does give less time, the later we wait, the less time to actually recruit the, the new hires. And, and so it's, it'd be better if you can launch it sooner rather than later, but, you know, again, it, it's completely flexible from your district standpoint on, again, when you want to proceed with this program.
Thank you.
I appreciate that clarification on the, on the timeline. In your experience, has there, have you seen districts moving forward with this in both circumstances, where it's coming from the district, or whether the, I've been in places where the teachers' union has been requesting it. And so what kind of balance do you have in terms of, of work that you're doing with districts currently?
Right, right. Generally speaking, the, the plans that are the most successful would have both, you know, the board and the teacher union groups in full support of the program. So in times where we can get both groups agreeing to the offer and, you know, recommending, you know, to move forward, or encouraging their folks to take advantage of the program, those are the programs where we get the best participation rates, and hence the best, the most fiscal savings to the district.
And there are, there are reasons that with enough time for an association to consider and understand the implications of this, that it may be something that would seem, be seen more cooperatively. Okay, correct. Thank you.
Dr. Maldonado?
So given, given what I think I'm hearing from tonight's discussion of this item, we can certainly, I'd like direction from the board, if it's something that you want me to continue to have conversations with our labor partners about, and if they agree to bring back, we bring back. Otherwise, I'm hearing that this is something we don't want to continue to consider. And if I had a third option, I'd like to hear that one, too. Thank you.
Ms. Menos?
Yes, I would want to, you know, continue to consider it, not to, how would I say, not to decide against it.
I, I would say the same thing. All, all I think this is doing is, is giving us a chance to have dialogue with our labor partners and say, is this something that, that would, would help us? Particularly if we're looking for increased respect and then regaining of trust and that kind of thing, that something that we do together feels to me that like it would be a more appropriate action than something that, that comes unilaterally, as well-intended as it is, and as positive as it might be. I think it would be better to, to get a little bit of sense from, from whether this might have interest if we look at it together.
Ms. Alvarez, and then Mr. Escobedo.
I, I want to get input from our labor's partners before I make a decision on this. It's extremely important to me that we build that relationship, that we build that collaboration, because that's the foundation of everything that we do. And like I said, I totally understand the fiscal, and I agree with the fiscal part totally. My biggest concern is the human component. And I want to make sure that human component is valued and is addressed, and that our teachers do not, that we don't do something that has unintended consequences that they might feel, oh, they're trying to push me out, because that is not the case at all. So what I want to see is, I want to see input from labor partners as far as if their membership wants us to look into this, if they're interested, before we send the official survey and say, yes, do you want to do it or not? That's what I need, as a board member.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think it also makes sense to start after tomorrow, when we hear back from our labor partner about class sizes, right? And we start to get a sense for what next contract looks like. I would also, I think, Ms. Fernandez, I think we have seen it a few times, where you have shown us what it means with the ESER funds and what it means without the ESER funds. So I think the next time that this comes to us, it would be great to have that context along with this proposed PARs program, in addition to all of the other information that we're going to have from tomorrow's meeting, beyond that, what the proposal for class sizes are. I think it's, we're going to have a lot more information. And I think.
Sounds good.
It makes a lot of sense to reach out to our labor partners, work with them.
Dr. Maldonado?
So with that, I'll withdraw this item.
Yes.
From, for consideration for action, and I will take the steps necessary that you have suggested today and reach out to our partners, as was directed. Thank you.
And then bring it back at that time, once you've.
If, if it does.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
If, if we get there, we'll bring it back.
That's what I'm saying. So that's when it'll be, there's no date, it's just based on how you, your participation, just want to be clear with that. So this item has been pulled from H3, has been pulled for action four, it's been tabled, so to speak. So we will move to H4. Our joint partners come here, thank you for being so patient. This is approval of a joint development agreement for the former Parma School site between the Santa Barbara Unified School District and Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara. Mr. Pides, you go first.
Good evening, President Sims Moten, Dr. Maldonado, board. Last time I came in front of you, we gave you a report about all the doings in the Housing Committee and, and some of the options that we've been looking at. Tonight, we present to you a joint agreement, a joint development agreement, to start working on developing the, the housing project that we are hoping to get done, started soon, in association with the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara. With that said, I will hand it off to Rob Fredericks from the Housing Authority.
Thank you, Ish. Good evening, President Sims Moten and board members. Rob Fredericks, Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara, pleased to see all of you again, and we're excited to get to this stage of, of, of our work that we've been doing jointly with the Housing Committee. And we have identified, as we notified the board at our last meeting, Parma School site as, the former Parma School, as the site that's, that's suitable for development. And this joint development agreement allows us to get started as the Housing Authority with pre-development work, starting to do all of the site investigations and applications with the city, engage our architects, and really putting forth the development plans that are required to then take it to the next level of applying for funding with low-income housing tax credits and other funding sources. So, you know, we, as is laid out in, in this joint development agreement, is we would plan to build somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 units, could be a little bit hot, more than that. Where, depends on the layout of, of the site with the, with the units. It would be on a ground lease, so the, as we previously discussed, this, you wouldn't be giving up fee title ownership of the property. It would remain in fee title ownership with the school district, but we would form a partnership like we do with our own developments for tax credits, to then lease the property from the school district, and we build the improvements upon that ground lease. And then when we're done, we're, with construction, we, we lease the units out to eligible school district employees at an affordable rent. And as we all heard tonight, that's something that's very much needed throughout the entire community, no matter what occupation you're involved with. So that's one of the reasons we're excited to be working with the school district on this. I have with me our general counsel from the Housing Authority, Mark Mannion from Price Postel Parma, and he worked very closely with your counsel, Craig Price, on developing the, the joint development agreement that encapsulated what we previously discussed with the board and the Housing Committee, and, and put it all into this agreement. And if it's passed tonight, we will take it to our board for, for their approval, and we would get moving on this for the pre-development work. And happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any request to speak on this item? No request to speak? Board members, comments? Mr. Escobedo, you want to give us some lead on this?
No questions, just want to thank you for your patience and for being here tonight, and also for all of your hard work. For those that don't know, this is a great partner to have in this. And we heard it tonight. This is not in place of teacher salaries, this is looking into the future and trying to support our teachers. And this is one way we're going to try and do it in. And this is one way we're going to try and do it, and every which way, we're going to pull every policy lever we can, this is one of them, and I'm just really excited to have such a great partner. Again, we're, we're going to own the land, we're putting up the land, and the Housing Authority knows how to get the money. And so, again, we couldn't be in better hands. I'm really excited and would love to make the motion when ready.
Any additional comments or questions from the board? Ms. Alvarez.
Mr. Fredericks, thank you so much. You've come a few times to these meetings, and I'm extremely grateful for your time, your commitment. Thank you, Mr. Price, for all the work that you've put into this. We've been talking about this for how many years? So thank you for all your work, for looking after the district's best interests. And to everyone else who collaborated with you, I, I don't know all of their names. This weekend, I was trying to catch up a little bit on my reading and reading some of the California School Board Association announcements that they make, and several school districts are doing this, exactly what we are doing. I read that Oakland School District just did the same thing, San Francisco did the same thing. So this is something that districts are taking advantage of, the state provisions that there are, and yes, we are extremely fortunate to have the Housing Authority as a partner and making this available for all of our employees. So thank you very much. And on the MOU, I thank you for clarifying that the number 11, the right of first refusal, that's very important, because for 15 years, right? The district will still have the, the right, when those 15 years, when all of us are not here, somebody else is here to make that decision, so.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. No questions, just a lot of gratitude.
Thank you.
Thank you, and just appreciate the community partnership. So hearing no additional comments or questions, Ms., can you speak on this?
Yes, yeah, just, you know, certainly, roof over the head, you know, roof over the head of our employees is so important. And hopefully, you know, which I think it will contribute to cutting back commuting for, for our employees and their families. I will abstain from voting on this because of my, because I am on the Housing Commission, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that.
First off, I wanted to say I forgot to thank Mr. Price. He's been pivotal in our work groups and Ish and Ms. Hernandez and all of our other trusted partners and Mr. Mannion, I haven't gotten a chance to meet you, but good to meet you. But thank you all. It's been a long process, we've been meeting weekly, and it's exciting to get here. And so I will move to approve the joint development agreement.
I would.
I'd like to second the motion with great appreciation to all the partners.
I will do a roll call, just to make sure we get the abstention. Ms. Alvarez?
Aye.
Mr. Banning?
Aye.
Ms. Munoz, just abstain?
Abstain.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Sims Moten?
Aye.
Motion passes forward with one extension. Thank you so much for your work, looking forward to continued partnership. We're going to take a little five-minute break, we've been going, we could just take a break here. So maybe seven minutes, I'll do seven. Seven minutes, so we can get back. It's back to order. There's three of us, we can stay in. Because now we're moving on to H5, approval of human resources. Okay, we're going to do some agenda management, where, where are we on? Action 12, okay. So with some agenda management folks here, we're going to move action H12 to right now. So who's our staff on that to make that report? Facilities Marina, is she in?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think she's on her way. Nope, that's Kimmy Lewis. Nope, nope, that's Eli. Okay, that's fine. So board members, for this item, action item number 12, this is a follow-up to a, an MOU that we had gone into effect in the past for a Santa Barbara High, San Marcos High School Wellness Facility for the Health Careers Academy and Wellness. It's been about two and a half years now. We're re-entering into the new MOU. As you know, it was difficult to get to the campaign amount that we originally set out to raise, but we want to extend it a little bit longer, and I want to give time to the principal, Mr. Holdren, to come up and talk a little bit about some of the things that he's been doing in order to get this campaign well underway. There's been some changes also originally, as you know, we've had a principal change since we last visited this item, and that you'll notice that there is a change to the amount that we originally approved, and that, and there is Marina. So thank you, Marina, I've been speaking to a little bit of the history of this San Marcos High School Wellness, thank you.
So we have the memorandum of understanding between the school district today and the Royal Pride Foundation, the RPF. You've got all the documents in front of you. What I do have is a little bit of a presentation with Dair's help to explain what the project is about and the points on, on the memorandum of understanding, to make sure that if you have any questions, whether what the history was and what the amounts were before and what they are now, I have all the answers for you today. So you know the RPF is a nonprofit organization? Am I controlling this, or? Okay. Okay, so the RPF is a nonprofit organization, is a 501(c)(3) that was founded in 2014 to raise funds for the San Marcos High School. And, you know, they're, they're raising funds right now for the Health Career Academy at, and that's a part of a technical CTE program, the state CTE program. And for San Marcos High School, that will be their health center. And it's, you know, the district and RPF, we're collaborating to create a good, comprehensive healthcare program that would, you know, be industry standard for training for future health professionals. So this would involve building new state-of-the-art facility and expanding the existing wellness center that they already have. The district has the authority to manage the design and the construction of the project. For the next slide, you will see the, some of the, you know, renderings that we might, you know, we've done before, couple of years before, I would say, you know, in the very beginning, we have these renderings. And they've, they've changed a little bit, the concept has changed. They added one more laboratory, one more science room, there was one, now we have two of them planned. And the Wellness Center will offer space for, you know, consulting and counseling and therapeutic sessions with social workers, for mental health professionals and therapists, and also provide programs for 200-plus students for, for their training in, in healthcare industry. The costs are as follows, we had, the project is at 10.25 million, more exactly, 10 million 254,000 dollars. The split is 54, 46, 54% is paid by the district, 46% is paid by the Royal Pride Foundation, and that breaks down to 5.5 million dollars on the district side and 4.7 million dollars on the Royal Pride Foundation's side. So the 5.517673, the number that you're seeing there, that was approved at the time when the bond projects were approved several years ago, as part of the, as part of the Measure I bond funds. So this project was approved at that amount, as, as far as district was concerned. The project is much bigger now, so it's like 10.25, 25 million, because the Royal Pride Foundation is involved, and they want to be a, a better program, you know, better facility, larger facility that would accommodate all the students that would be interested in the program. So in case the Royal Pride Foundation is not able to raise the money, we, the MOU states that we can change the scope and make it smaller, so we can revise the scope. It depends on the fundraising effort and, you know, how well they can do. So some of the pictures here are, you know, they're very nice pictures, how the, the concept was imagined at the time. I don't know if you want to talk about some of that there, you know, if, you know, that has changed or not, but the pictures are, you know, all the next ones are pictures.
Sure.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me to talk about this project. So as Marina said, basically the project is this, it's twofold. It's one, to reimagine our Health and Wellness Center to be a hub for mental, social, physical health on campus, all in one place, eliminating the stigma of students having to go to the office to seek services, providing room for our group meetings, including our healthy relationships groups and, and other groups that we're constantly searching for, to find a classroom to put them in for a period. And then the other half of that is to create what amounts to a mini-campus for our Health Careers Academy, which has been around for 20-plus years and prepared many students to get good jobs, to be able to stay in this town. We are going to basically create a mini-campus that is going to allow us to expand the Health Careers Academy and work with some of our community partners to develop a Health Careers Academy program moving forward. In fact, we're in the middle right now of programmatic committee meetings to create a five-year plan to make the Health Careers Academy stand out as far as, you know, the academy to be at San Marcos, and also to prepare kids to get as close as possible to certifications for jobs in the healthcare industry. So we're having those meetings with a lot of high-level partners in our community. Dr. Malanato helped us start it out last year by having some listening sessions. You all and some of your predecessors have approved already a, a naming campaign, fundraising for, for our, you know, our crew here, but without the MOU in place, obviously, it's a little harder to fundraise the amount of money that we need, but we're very confident we can do that. We already have over 250,000 dollars in pledges, and the passing of the MOU tonight was, is really going to help propel us, along with the work of the programmatic committee, into making this happen. So I'm extremely confident it's going to happen, but of course, the MOU has protections on all sides, and I just think it's going to be a great project, and it's going to transform San Marcos High School. And, you know, one change we've made in the last year is now it's the building community wellness, instead of just building wellness, because we do anticipate that that, that Wellness Center will be able to, to meet some of the needs of our, of our community as well. So we're in a really cool place to imagine, you know, kind of reimagine what it means to have these buildings at San Marcos, and, and I appreciate your consideration tonight. And I can answer any questions that Marina can answer, or vice versa, I'm sure.
Any requests to speak on this item, Ms. Escobedo? No requests to speak. Board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Alvarez?
Number one, thank you, both of you, thank you very much. I do remember when this spread forward and how, what a good, what a good legacy, what a great service to students. I, I'm 100% behind it, I can hardly wait, and I look forward to supporting, outside of being a board member, this Wellness Center for, for our students at San Marcos, so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Ms. Munoz?
Certainly, thank you, very supportive of this project. I had been to the Health Careers Academy graduation a while back and just was so impressed by the caliber of the classes, the teachers and the students that benefited from it. Being in the health field myself, as a social worker, I certainly know the shortage of, you know, local employees that we have. We're always, of course, looking for RNs and, and medical staff, you know, I see the radiology here is listed here too, and so forth, has my full support, and the Wellness Center is, you know, I've just been excited and looking forward to this. I had been a county social worker where I would go see students there, and as you stated, you know, it's like in the back area there, had to go through the back, find a student, and certainly showing that, that there's a priority for a confidential space demonstrates how valued the students are, and also can give them support at that level is just, you know, so needed in our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments?
I would just add, thank you for the presentation, certainly seeing this vision through when it first came through, probably about two years ago, I think, we started there.
It was, it was before my time.
Right, so it was, it's been maybe even three, but I'm thinking definitely for, two for sure, but I remember it coming to us in concept, so to see it moving forward is really good. Again, you know, I think it's been said here through many of the speakers about, we are the community, and the community is us, right? And so how do we do this together, and we see what we can do when we're working together for the good of all? And I think it's important that, as you, you know, as you also said, Principal Dair, about reducing the stigma, because it's like, that's the wellness thing, but it's like, that's where we go to get help, and it's okay. And it says, now you're getting help, because that's also part of a system. When the people leave out, there's a system in place that will help folks and not feel bad about, that we're so glad that you have somewhere to go. So I just appreciate the presentation and the work that's being done, and know, and looking forward to, as we continue to progress through this project. With that, hearing no additional comments, may I have a motion for approval?
So moved, that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Santa Barbara Unified School District and Royal Pride Foundation at San Marcos High School regarding the San Marcos High School Wellness Facility for the Healthcare Academy and Wellness Center as presented.
Okay, second. In motion and second, all in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Thank you so much for your presentation. Also, I'd like to, as we continue to move, we are, Dr. Malanato, you still want to pull item 11?
Yes, we are, yes, I have been informed that we need to pull item H11, thank you.
Okay. All right. So we will now move to H5, approval of human resources recommendation, where my, Dr. Beckio is on his way.
Thank you very much. This is the regular approval of all the recommendations the Human Resources Department is making to the board. These are the human resources actions, and if I could just take a couple minutes to highlight a couple items. First, as you heard today, I did want to once again congratulate Fred Rozo. I, I think I may have told this story, he didn't tonight, he just said he answered quick, but I called him and he was on a trip with his wife in his car, and I, I asked him if he would come help us, and he said yes immediately, and then he said, wait, hold on a second. And he, yep, I can do it. So anyways, he's such a great man, and I appreciate him and wanted to highlight that. So anyways, I also wanted to go down and, and recognize Jesus Solis, one of our painters who's retiring. If we go down a little bit further on that first page, there's some promotions, Adriana Miranda, Connie Rojas Ramirez, and Katia Trujillo. And then, so congratulations to them. And then I also, again, want to point out the language services premium for several of our classified employees, Maria Pia Bell, Gustavo Ramirez, and Brenda Olivia, Zarza Oliva, and also Janisha Rangel, a curriculum specialist, is getting a premium for a bachelor's degree, so congratulations to them. With that, I'll turn it over to the board and for your consideration.
Okay, any questions, speak, let me just check, I don't think we do. Okay, so I don't see any additional requests to speak. Board members, any questions or comments? Hearing no comments or questions, may I have a motion for approval, please?
I move to approve the human resources recommendations.
A second.
In motion and second, all in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
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 Thank you, Dr. Beckio, motion passes. Approve, I think you're staying, no? I think you're, I think you're staying, Dr. Beckio. Oh, it's Ann, okay. Okay. So we're moving to H6, approval of resolution 2023-24 as 15, Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. Speak.
There we go. Good evening, Board President Sims Moten, Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Malanato. The item you have in front of you is the Annual Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators and Resolution Number 23, 2023-24. Educators and Resolution Number 23, 2023-24/15. This item was previously brought before the board and approved, but due to missing statutory language, we are resubmitting the form to the CTC per their request. The Declaration of Need is a common credential procedure used across all California school districts. It authorizes districts to hire teachers who may be in need of emergency certification, such as an emergency cloud certificate or a limited assignment permit, which authorizes fully credentialed teachers to teach outside their particular subject area while pursuing additional additional coursework. In regard to the request from the CTC, the missing word, Spanish, falls under the category of single-subject limited assignment permits, world languages. This has been corrected on the recent form and will be submitted upon approval. So I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have regarding the declaration.
Okay, there are no requests to speak on this item. Board members, questions or comments? May I have a motion?
I move to for the approval of resolution 2023-24-15, Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators.
And I second. Okay. Motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Move to H7.
I'm just going to hang out here.
It's you? Okay. Approval of provisional internships. I'll just announce the item.
Yeah.
Approval of provisional intern permits to be submitted to the CTC. And Ms. Peak.
Again, good evening, everyone. The next item you have in front of you is the request to approve the provisional internship permits, otherwise known as a PIP. It was created in response to the phasing out of emergency permits. These permits allow an employing agency to fill an immediate staffing need by hiring an individual who has not yet met the subject matter competence requirement needed to enter an intern credential program. On this document, you'll find the names of two individuals we are requesting the CTC to review and approve their PIP applications. Both candidates are enrolled in credential programs and are completing preliminary coursework toward their credentials.
I'm doing a lot of managing late at night. So are there any requests to speak on this item? No requests to speak on this item. Board members, any questions or comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Peak. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Dr. Beckio, H8, approval of 2024-25 school year calendar.
Okay, thank you. As you may be aware, each year by August, the end of August, we are shooting for having approved school year calendar. We do negotiate the calendar with SBTA. This year, SBTA and and the district team had an interest in, because we, because we switched to a three-week winter break, the one interest we had was, is it still this, is there any compelling reason to switch that before we've actually experienced the three-week winter break? And in particular, the district was interested in surveying classified staff, because our concern around classified staff was that there may be childcare issues and and things of that sort. And so we just wanted to find out if this was the right direction to agree to another year. Otherwise, the intention of the district was to actually experience the three-week winter break and then survey in the springs for the following year calendar. Just the way the timing goes, we we have to get a calendar approved. We did take a little bit longer to work on this, send out surveys, hence why it's coming to you now in November. The, I provided you with some of the survey results. The one that that the district was looking at really closely was the classified staff, which was pretty overwhelmingly interested in in having the three-week winter break. And so we do, we are proposing this calendar again, and it it actually is a rollover. It wasn't an agreement between SBTA and SB Unified. It actually just rolls. Our contract calls for it to roll over if we don't reach agreement. And so we will be engaging again in the spring surveying to see how was that experience with the three-week winter break and then make a determination about the 25-26 calendar. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
I don't think we have any requests to speak on this item. Board members, any questions or comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I I move that we approve the 24-25 school calendar as presented.
In second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Beckio. I think you're still here.
Yeah, one more.
H9, approval of recommended reclassifications made during 22-23 classified reclassification process.
Right, okay. So this is a contractual process in the CSCEA bargaining agreement whereby CSE, CSCEA members or classified, regular classified employees have the opportunity to apply for reclassification. And so that happens in December. The committee meets, the committee one, Level One Committee meets in the spring. They then make, either advance the cases to Level Two or else deny them. And then there's also an appeal process at both of those levels. We have, albeit late, because there was, as I wrote in the report, there was an overwhelming amount of reclassification requests this year. And so it did take us longer. We finally worked our way through the appeal process on almost all the cases, and we have brought forward tonight the cases that were either approved at Level Two or actually modified on appeal as well. So that's what you'll see in front of you tonight. The total dollar amount is $34,855. And you'll also notice that we did already bargain the job description changes with CSCEA, which is a requirement. And so we included the red line changes on the job descriptions with those particular reclassifications. And so with that, I'm happy to turn it over to you for any questions you might have.
Request to speak from the public?
Yes, we have one. Ken Rebus?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Maldonado. First, I'd like to, I thank the Level One Committee, who did a lot of, lot of hard work on this. It took a few months to get through it all, and I believe it was like over 46 reclasses submitted. That's unprecedented this year, where in years past, we'd see seven, nine, you know. So anyhow, that being said, the team that worked on these was on, at the Level One, was Tara Weiss, Dan Dupont, Carmen Rodriguez, and Suzette McCormick from the management side. And on the classified side of the table, working collaboratively, was Jared Jantsch, Jennifer Buffeta, Samantha Pimentel, and Cecilia, Celia Lamir Campbell. And I really want to thank those people and really appreciate the hard work everyone did, and then to get that advanced to the next level at Level Two. And thank those folks. I don't know who they are, but I know John was on that. But anyhow, I'm here to really say that I'd wish that you would support. CSCEA is certainly in support of this decision, and we'd like for you to join us in that as well.
Thank you.
Board members, any comments or questions? Ms. Alvarez.
Thank you, Dr. Beckio, for all your work and your team. Thank you, Mr. Rebus, and thank you to the committee that you mentioned. And congratulations to these employees who are being reclassified, and good for them for bringing this forward. I'm glad that they feel empowered and confident to do that. So thank you.
Now may I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the recommended reclassifications made during the 22-23 classified reclassification process.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Beckio. Board members, that does conclude our, that does include our conclude. It's getting late in the hour. What? 10? Isn't that 10? Oh, the freckle. Sorry. Presence of the freckle. Forgot the freckle. Come on up. Sorry about that. It's getting late in the hour. I'm trying to move us forward. So H10, approval of purchase of Freckle for targeted tier two intervention and support for grades first through the sixth. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Maldonado, I am here to bring forward this request to purchase the approval of Freckle, which is a targeted platform, digital platform that supports our tier two. This year, we have focused on our tier one, but we do recognize that there's also a need for our tier two supports that are targeted interventions. Our principals all have shown interest. We currently have one school, Adams Elementary, who is using the platform, and they have seen success and growth within their school. Their teachers are using it, and we currently show that 90 students are showing growth. This aligns with our STAR assessment that we have shared with you previously in different reports that we use throughout the school year. Our teachers assign tasks and monitor student progress with this platform. Parents can take part in the child's learning by reviewing the progress online, and administrators at the district and site level can support teachers by monitoring school-wide performance as well as progress and growth. As I shared, Adams has 26 teachers using it, 445 students, and with 90 students showing growth currently. The fiscal impact would be $54,901.63 for all of our nine elementary schools, and this would, the funding source would be unrestricted lottery. I do have Ms. Phoenix Plotner, who is the teacher who brought this forward to Adams Elementary when she was there last school year, and I have her here to share a little bit more.
Good evening. My name is Phoenix. I'm currently the Elementary Technology Instructional Support Specialist for the District for Elementary, but I did teach at Adams Sixth Grade for six years, and I have used Freckle since 2019 with my students, and I support its purchase for first through sixth-grade teachers in the district. Freckle is a powerful ally that extends our reach, providing us with data and insights to help personalize instruction and tailor our teaching strategies to meet the unique needs of each student. Its adaptive practice, gamified elements, and data-driven approach have the potential to enhance the way that we teach and the way that students learn. In Language Arts, for example, Freckle offers a diverse library of over 1,000 informational articles and fictional stories tailored to various grade levels. These resources cover a range of reading levels from early readers all the way up to 12th grade, allowing students to access material suited to their proficiency. Freckle provides specific standards for practice, word study activities, decoding practice, and sight word exercises. Teachers can assign stories and articles aligned with particular standards and preview the assignments easily, enabling students to work at their individual levels. Additionally, the integration with Renaissance accounts ensures that students' STAR scores inform Freckle about their reading levels, allowing for personalized content delivery. And there is flexibility to assign content to the entire class, to groups, or to individuals to ensure that students' needs are met. Stories and articles can also be printed for offline use, enhancing accessibility as well as text-to-speech options, and having assignments also be available in Spanish. For math, Freckle's math practice is a wonderful tool. It incorporates students' levels, once again, based on STAR, and adjusting practice problems across various domains. Targeted math practice allows for the assignment of specific standards, fostering focused learning. Students can practice number facts, the basics, and engage in depth of knowledge challenges, which my students really liked. They would buddy up and try to get as many coins as they could, so they could spend it on their little avatar, so the students are obsessed with it. If a student struggles with an assignment, teachers can easily assign the prerequisite standards that Freckle will automatically show you in the report. And it also covers standards from kindergarten all the way up to Algebra II. So for both ELA and math, Freckle provides detailed reports on student progress, report cards, performance by standards, goal setting. It will group students based on performance as well. You can have heterogeneous or homogeneous groups. There is also reports for skill assessment, progress monitoring, and fact practice. And so Freckle's personalized approach and data-driven insights hold the potential to help elevate student learning experiences. And if any teachers need help getting support or need a demo, I'm the person they can contact. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Additional comments you need to make?
No. Any questions?
Any requests to speak on this item? Okay. Board members, comments or questions? Ms. Munoz.
Thank you for the presentation. I think it's it's a great, you know, for students in terms of the support for for them from early grades to later grades, and I appreciate, you know, your hands-on knowledge of of Freckle and such. And so no, has certainly had my support. Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez.
It sounds like a good instructional tool. My question is, a few meetings ago, we had a group of parents concerned about screen time and the, so how is this going to be balanced as far as the screen time and the educational value of the program?
The focus will be during the Power Hour, so all of our elementary schools have a time during the day that is designated to support students with interventions, and that is the time that was designated by all principals in our elementary schools.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Does Freckle stand for something, or it's just Freckle? It doesn't stand for anything? Okay, good. I don't have to remember another acronym. I'm just checking. No additional comments or questions? May I have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve Freckle for one through six, ELA and math as presented.
In second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Motion passes. Now that we've come to the point where we concluded our action agenda. So I know the hour is getting late. Sometimes we just might have to do late hour, make sure we're getting our business done. So we're going to press through. We're going to make some adjustments. So, Dr. Maldonado, do you want to do I2 first or do I1? How do you want to, in that order?
We can do I2, since I know we have a couple of teachers in the audience also for I2. Is that correct, Ms. Sheffield, Dr. Sheffield? So Dr. Fish, let's start with you. Or is it, Ms., Dr. Wilson?
We have one each. There's I1 and I2.
Yes, you're there now. We'll just do it. And so, just so, again, we're managing. Thank you, those who have stayed late to make comments. We're going to, we're going to get to you, so we're just going to take it out of, or just this one, and we know that we have some requests to speak on both of them. So this is I2 that is being presented right now.
Good evening, Board President Sims Moten, Board Trustees, Superintendent Maldonado, and district staff. I will be sharing a presentation with you this evening related to our secondary curricula adoptions that we have underway in the Ed Services Department. And I am joined by Ms. Janet Hollister, who is our Instructional Support Specialist for secondary math, as well as Mr. Art Nelson, who, Art Nelson Concordia, who is our Ethnic Studies Instructional Support Specialist. And they are the experts in their field, and they will be providing an overview of their timeline as well as their process. And unfortunately, Mrs. Nellie Hill was not able to stay for the rest of the evening, so I'll be sharing some highlights related to her process as well. That's me. So we'll be reviewing timelines for the secondary curricula adoptions, and we'll also summarize important details for the adoptions, and then lastly, overview our next steps and upcoming actions, specifically as they relate to the Board of Education.
Good evening. Early in 2023, the math teacher leaders in Santa Barbara Unified were looking at our student outcomes and also looking towards the California Math Framework that was going to be published in the summer. And we were thinking about how high-quality instructional materials can help us improve our student outcomes, at the same time, meet the demands that the California Math Framework was going to set in front of us, the challenges, the way that they're going to ask us to revise and think about the way that we're teaching mathematics. So teachers came together and they started looking at the instructional materials that were out there and available. And over the past six months, we've developed our district lens to how we're going to look at instructional materials. We've created an adoption process, and we've created a committee to look at our top three options. And so we're now in this October to January phase where we have done a book review of the three top options and did some ranking and rating with rubrics, and teachers are piloting or trying out lessons and and did some ranking and rating with rubrics, and teachers are piloting or trying out lessons and units. And we're in the process of gathering information about how the materials actually work with actual students. So our goal is that by February, we come to get back together as a committee. We look at all of the information that we've gathered, and we're able to come to consensus on a program to bring forward to you, which would then set off a thirty-day window for public review and bringing materials forward for a potential adoption in April.
For physics, the initial part of the adoption began back in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and a committee worked on investigating the curricula options, as well as began a pilot in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. However, between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-three, we know the COVID pandemic, COVID-nineteen pandemic occurred, so much of what that initial work came to a halt. And from the initial pilot, there was a determination that there weren't any options that they wanted to bring forward at that time. Fast forward to fall of two thousand and twenty-three, we actually began a new pilot based on the identification of a new curriculum. And then we anticipate in November, actually later this month, that the committee will select that curriculum for adoption once they reach consensus. And we anticipate needing to come to the board in December to open the thirty-day window to review the curriculum by public, and then subsequently, a recommendation to the board coming in January with the purchase of materials in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Maldonado, I'll be speaking on two of our ethnic studies courses, History of Africans in America, HAA, and Chicana-Chicano-Chicanex and Latina-Latino-Latinx Studies. We're calling Chilat Studies, and the respective texts we'd like officially adopted. I'll provide both context and timeline for each process for your review. So for the first class, first course, HAA, course development was initiated in November of two thousand and twenty, in large part in response to Black Student Youth SB demands for ethnic studies classes with culturally relevant curriculum. A committee was formed in November of two thousand and twenty. The course developed in December along with identification and purchase of the text, Black History Three-Six-Five. The course was offered as an ethnic studies elective the following month, January two thousand and twenty-one. I'm sure you'll notice the compressed window upon which the course was developed, text purchased, and course offered. While the process taken with the HAA text diverged from the proper steps, I'm here tonight to share a process for an official adoption and request official adoption. Lastly, in April of two thousand and twenty-three, the I, the ISS, submitted HAA to UCOP's, through UCOP's Course Management Portal for approval as US History, as a US History course, and it was approved the following month, May two thousand and twenty-three. For the second course, Chilat Studies, the Course Development Committee was initiated in January two thousand and twenty-one. The course was offered as an ethnic studies elective in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two. In February of two thousand and twenty-three, the Course Development Committee, through me, submitted Chilat Studies for UCOP approval, and it was approved in March of two thousand and twenty-three. So lastly, this month, I'll meet with both committees where we'll review materials using toolkits provided by the state, evaluating options and gathering evidence for an official selection. And then we hope to come back to you in January to report on our process.
This slide summarizes some important details related to each adoption. And so we have subject areas, grade spans, and that they affect, as well as number of students and estimated costs. So for our math adoption, we anticipate, because it's a seven-through-twelve adoption impacting seven thousand one hundred students, that it will cost us a million dollars, two hundred, one million, two hundred thousand dollars. For physics, it's a ninth-grade adoption impacting thirteen hundred and twenty students. We anticipate it costing us twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars for the first year and then seventeen thousand nine hundred for subsequent years. And for ethnic studies, we anticipate that costing for the first text, ten thousand five hundred, and the Chilat Studies text, eight thousand four hundred dollars. Our next steps in terms of the timelines that were just shared by each instructional specialist for each subject area. So in December, we will be coming to the board for a recommendation to open the thirty-day window for our physics and ethnic studies texts. And then in January, we will come for a recommendation for these adoptions for both physics and ethnic studies. Then in March, we will come back to open the thirty-day window after the math selection, and then to, back to the board in April for the final recommendation for the math text. And that concludes our presentation. I'd like to open it up for questions, comments, or suggestions.
Okay, any requests to speak on this item? We do.
Yeah, we have one. Kim Tilton. Welcome back.
I know, sorry. I won't be at the next one.
No, please.
Hi, I'm a science teacher at San Marcos, and I'm currently mentoring a teacher who's a brand-new physics teacher. And I've been part of the San Marcos community, teaching physics, chemistry, biology, and environmental science for a long time. And they, I want to let you know that physics is the first science class that freshmen take, and freshman year is like a critical, critical year for our students. If they don't do well, the statistics are not good for them. So they have been like a revolving door of pilots for physics. It's kind of been in disarray thanks to the hard work of Nellie Hill, who's an amazing TOSA. I just want to amplify her voice, and whenever she has things she needs, support her. The number seventeen thousand, you know, for ongoing two-plus. The adoption that they took was a curriculum that was made for free by a physics teacher. So I'm assuming most of those costs come from the materials, which are really engaging. I've seen the curriculum as I've been mentoring, but I will say it is not ready in its current form. It's basically this massive set of PowerPoint slides, kind of, that our teachers are having to work to like actually turn into a curriculum. This is not like a Freckle where there's like a lot of things built into it, and even then, they need training for Freckle and how to use it. It's not differentiated for our learners. There's just a tremendous amount of work ahead for our science teachers. So when we adopt these pilots and then they turn into curriculum, I want to make sure we're creating budget space for ongoing professional development for years and years to come, because what I've seen is just this constant, even in other sciences, cycle. So I would encourage the board to ask, what does that number look like if it includes professional development? Not for year one, not for year two, and not just professional development, but the work my teachers are gonna have to do to actually make that curriculum impactful, because it can be as good as, who all knows what. But they have to employ it onto the children, and they're the experts. So I just want to say for maybe the next round, when we're looking at the adoption, can we see a more specific set of where that money's gonna go? And can we make sure we create space, not just for materials, but also for our teachers?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments on that. Board members, comments or questions? Comments or questions? Ms. Escavina?
When you come back in December and we open the thirty-day window, is it, I know for other curriculum sets, we've had it available online for folks to take a look so that they don't have to come to a district office to take a look at a physical copy. That'll be the same for this?
Yes, we can do that. Yeah. And we can also have it available here in the front via a computer as well that they could access, so we can do both.
Okay. Not to get ahead of it, but it is worthwhile. I mean, we have, in other curriculum adoptions, talked about what it looks like in terms of implementation. It'd be nice in the future to get some sort of picture for us, give us some context for what it looks like for the implementation process.
Yes, we can also do that as well.
Thank you.
I just had a question on the ethnic studies. So didn't we start this in ninth grade? Is this a different curriculum, or was that the pilot? Because I know it started in ninth grade. Can you speak to that? Mr. Art?
Yes, I can speak to that. So we have a pretty robust menu of courses within our ethnic studies offerings. We have the ninth-grade course, but the two courses we're talking about today are eleventh-grade offerings.
Are they connecting from, are they connecting between?
So we are, we are in the process of creating a pathway from ninth. We recently, we're in the process of figuring out a tenth-grade course, English course, and then eleventh, and then potentially a twelfth-grade, maybe advanced survey, kind of seminar course for seniors.
So you're able to get eleventh grade, but you're still working on tenth grade?
So would it be premature to share?
Ms. Sheffield?
There are things in the work to bridge.
I'm just looking at the number order. I'm just saying. Okay.
So for eleventh grade, eleventh grade, the two classes that he was speaking of tonight count, will be counting for US History credit.
Okay.
And so the ninth grade counts for ethnic studies. We also have the ninth grade that has a English component connected to it. Now we are looking at developing, well, it's developed, but we're in the process of, for the tenth-grade course, which is the English connected to ethnic studies. And that's where the eleventh grade, and then we would definitely need to identify a twelfth-grade course. But because we have the study of African-Americans and the Chilat, those will qualify for our students to take in place of regular US history, and that's why that was already there.
Okay, I appreciate that, making that connection, because I knew it had to do with the night. It was like, wait a minute, but it was English, but okay, it's been some years, but I kind of remember. So, okay. So not hearing any additional, oh, Ms. Munoz?
Yeah, just, just also to say, you know, for the physics curriculum, to make sure that the teachers do have good support and training for that, and that it's clear.
Yes, I did want to just share that the quote that was, the estimate that was in the chart is actually inclusive of professional development, too. So I appreciate the advocacy for the physics program, for Nellie Hill and her support of it. And we did ask, because the materials are free, for that really to focus in on the professional learning.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
Good evening, and thank you. When we were approving Wit and Wisdom, we were shown the professional development, the timeline. The summer, we going to do this. Next summer, we're going to do that. I look forward to seeing that as well, at your next presentation, where this is implemented, where it says, this is the implementation period, and this is when our professional development. And I remember when Wit and Wisdom, I believe, during the summer, most of the teachers were trained and they were paid to come in and be paid. I would like to see something similar for this, for the rollout of this new curriculum, so that our teachers are fully prepared and supported as well.
Yes, I agree. We will definitely follow that same process in terms of having a full plan for implementation. And this was really the first step in terms of introducing you to the three adoptions that we have underway, and then we'll provide additional information ongoing.
All right, here are no additional comments and directions from staff and from comments. I will, looking forward to what you're bringing back. It's December, right, to open the thirty-day windows, what you're gonna be asking for in December?
Right.
Is that coming back on consent, or does that?
I would like to, if the board approves, to bring it back in consent.
With those comments that have been asked to extend.
With the timeline included and all of that. Okay, we can do that.
You good? Okay.
Thank you.
Was that consensus, Board President?
I, I'll leave it to you two to manage the agendas, but if there's time, it'd be good to discuss. I know we have packed agendas, so make the judgment call, but it was helpful for us all to hear each other's questions when we were talking about the ELA adoption. So personally, I would prefer if it were a report, but if our agenda doesn't allow for it, then I will defer to your wisdom.
We'll just conclude. We'll manage the action agenda.
Ms. Sims-Moten, I also prefer that it's not on the consent.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. We're just gonna move to action.
Perfect. Thank you. I didn't hear you.
That's okay. But yeah, thinking, making that next step. So we're good? Have you got confused direction from us right now? Thank you for your presentation. Yeah, we will be bringing this back on action so that we can discuss it further. Everybody good? Okay, all right, perfect. All right, now we'll go back to I one, and we're just gonna truncate this presentation.
I'm gonna ask my staff to put up the first slide. So this item, which is the CSBA Policy Manual, is a long-time coming project that we have wanted to do for, since I've arrived to Santa Barbara Unified. There has been the need to update our policies, and we've been trying to do this in piecemeal for the last couple of years while also dealing with all the other things that have been going on. And we, we learned about this CSBA system for board policy management, which really allowed us to do a comprehensive review of our board policies, save time on our staff, and to be able to focus on all the other things that we need to do. So with your approval, we entered into an agreement with CSBA teams to take us through a process of reviewing the policy manual. So I'm gonna have you go to the third slide, Sandra, please. This is what, no, go back one, right there. So this is, this is the expected outcome, which would be to have a dedicated website run by CSBA with all of our policies in it. The way that it looks right now, you can see that it has the items by the numbers and the types of, whether it's a board policy or an AR, and all of them say draft status. You can see that it goes from the zero, zero, zero to the nine thousand. We spent, you can go to the previous slide, we spent three days in this room poring over each one of the policies to be sure that we were up to date with federal, state, ed code, and every other kind of legal mandates that we have, and sometimes there's government codes involved for some of these policies. And we expect in the, to do this in two parts. So today is the first reading that you have for these policies. We'll be bringing it back again in December for a second reading. And I did want you guys to notice that in some cases, we used the CSBA recommendations. In other cases, we used SB Unified Language, and sometimes we ended up combining the two. Because it is something that's done on a platform, it's not something where we could do like we did with the inter-district transfer, where you were able to see the red lines item by item. So that is the work that we have done. If you go to a couple of more slides, Sandra, I don't know how much the board wants me to go into this one more, but we did have some additional examples for you, and I know that we're short on time, Board President, so you asked me to go a little faster, where we could sort of show, you know, some of the highlights for you. Because we have a second reading, I mean, I'm happy to bring that back to the second meeting in December, or if you choose to take a little longer, that's also on the table. But that is the project. It is a contract we entered into, and it's a work stream that we've completed. I'm happy to take your questions.
Okay, I appreciate that truncated piece, because we're getting late in the hour, but we do have a request to speak on this item, and then I'll have the board comments.
Dina Davis, welcome. Thank you for being patient. Is your microphone on? We'll restart the clock.
Right, okay. Hi, Dina Davis. Yes, my thoughts were organized. Policy is so important. I know you know that, but as a parent of a student with multiple disabilities, I'm only into the one thousands. I've been combing through myself. I don't know what the public input is, but I just know that we all come and go, but there will always be students with IEPs. And often, parents are, for example, I'm looking at comprehensive. And often parents are, um, for example, I'm looking at comprehensive safety plan. Mr. Shetler and the, um, former CPAC, we, um, were able to have a wonderful presentation about safety plans, making sure that our administrators are keeping the needs of students with disabilities in mind, developing these safety plans. I guess I want to leave you just making sure that the language includes, um, that there's representation from all either students or parents of students. Um, I see sometimes plans are reviewed by all parent groups, but having different perspectives at the table right away will save you time, um, probably save you complaints down the road. So I'm going to be pouring through and emailing if things come up, um, if that's the appropriate way to give feedback. That, um, we can make systemic change through policies, so.
Thank you. And please do send, uh, any comments you have to us.
Board members. Mr. Escobedo.
Okay, so I too have been looking through these and it's very difficult to go through all of these board policies. I get it, we can't redline. But the, the PowerPoint that you just showed us is not online with, with what specific changes have been made. So my request would be for us to post on our website as soon as possible, those changes that you just went through, and also send those to the board so that we can narrow down our focus. Cause what I've been doing, as soon as I started seeing that I would have to read over a thousand pages of text, I started looking at the glossaries and just picking out the ones that stuck out to me and trying to compare them to what we have on the website. And it, it's very difficult. So, uh, if you could just help us narrow it down to where we made changes, even if it's by topic area, that would be extremely helpful, not only for us, but for the public. And if it's that PowerPoint, it's that PowerPoint, but, uh, we need something, cause.
So we did reach out. Thank you for that question, because we did get that question before. We did reach out to the CSBA representative. In order for us to do that, we would go away from the platform itself and actually go back to pouring over the, the documents and converting everything to Word, which will take us, uh, probably.
So that wasn't my request. My request was just give us the topics that we need to be focusing on where there were changes, substantial changes in policy, either to be in compliance with state law or some other regulation or CSBA, those sorts of things that we should be focusing on. Obviously, we should be focusing on all of these policies, but even between now and December, it's going to be pretty difficult for anyone to catch any changes.
So I'm, I, again, I, if for us to do that, we probably will need a couple of months to go back, because the work that we did didn't get captured that way. So the team would have to go back and sit through it one more time to actually take note of the capturing of all those, those changes that were made.
So what was on the PowerPoint?
The finals. The finals with the, the after the revisions have been done.
I think he's referring to where you showed some examples on the PowerPoint and those were just, if I understand, those were just a couple of examples to kind of show. It wasn't representative of, it will be thousands of pages of changes if, to, to, to do what you're asking. Let me offer a perspective. I don't want to interrupt your time, but CSBA's website is the most common way that policy is used all over the state. Um, I'm surprised to find districts still not using it. It's comprehensive. Um, and what comes along with what we're, we're purchasing here is a quarterly review process. So that anytime a law changes, they send us something that say, you need to review and revise your policy to reflect the new changes, the changes in law. And that alone will add enormous amounts of time to board meetings, because if it hasn't been done on a regular basis, school districts that are doing this and keeping up on it are doing numerous policies every quarter, where there's lots of reading to be involved. What I would say is what they've just done is taken the gold standard for what policy should be. We now know that every policy in the, in the list agrees with state law and all of the regulations and, and ed code and all of those kinds of things, and the references are there. There's no longer, um, there's no longer old stale policy. It's all fresh. It's correct. It's right. And if we say, let's look through it, and if there's questions about anything in particular that you want to know about in the new policy, which I would not, I would stop saying the new policy and say the correct policy. Because these policies are really not about what the district is wanting to do. This is the reflection of every law and regulation that tells you what you must do. And, and in that case, I, you know, you were saying sometimes you went with CSBA's recommendations and sometimes with ours and sometimes a merge. I would suggest that the most dangerous place we're in is if we have our policy or a merged policy as opposed to what CSBA is saying is the gold standard. Because now we have to specifically mark and be aware of every policy we have that's different from CSBA's, because when their revision comes out, if we say, oh, this looks good, because they show the changes and all the things that are there, we may lose things or duplicate things that are in that mixture. So, um, I, I understand this, this is incredibly overwhelming. There's no way any one person is going to read through all of this and make sense out of it. It's a project that I think has to start out of ground zero. This is it. This is the gold standard. This is what our policies are. And we're not even talking about administrative regulations too. And, and policies are different than, than ARs.
Yeah, so I'll just say this is that yes, and I can't fully buy that only for the one thought that then we would have to accept that every policy that we have on the books is mandated by law. And from my understanding, there, we, if that were the case, then every single policy handbook would look exactly the same from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, no matter what school district you were a part of. To say that there's no leeway in policy, I, it just, or regulation, I, I, I guess I'm struggling a little bit. I, I'm being asked to approve something that I don't know that I'll be able to fully understand what the difference between the previous policies were in this, so.
And I think this is why, and I just want to just add to that, and just with this process, because we're so far behind in all of these things. And I try, we're trying to be efficient. I know that we've asked our staff to do that, and I think that's what they were trying to take the heavy load and do that and, and speak to what Bill is saying there too. But I, certainly this is why we need to, this is why we have first readings, even about process. So, you know, this is, is good discussion about what we need to do, because again, there's a lot of work that, that really tried to catch up years, years, years have passed and haven't been doing that. And so it is, yes, overwhelming, because it has been years that it's not been done. And so at some point, we have to have a start, a starting point, just to, to your point, but to why we're at this, at this point in time, uh, as we look at these policies. Uh, Ms. Alvarez?
I share a hundred percent Mr. Escobedo's concerns. I, I'm also very concerned about approving policies that I don't have what's, what changed. I, I, the process was, I have to say, a surprise to me because, uh, this process that I've been part of in the past has involved the board members. And now this are thousands and thousands of pages to read. And in full disclosure, I have not had, I just didn't have the time, the opportunity to read everything before I can, I can even ma, have a discussion about it, because it's just not possible with the timeframe. I, I personally need to read it and know what I'm approving. I mean, this is district policy. And though I agree with, um, Mr. Banning about CSBA, I agree with you a hundred percent about being in compliance with the policies. However, now that I've heard that some of it is CSBA, some of it is SB Unified, how am I going to know the difference? I, I, I don't know that. So for me, I would say I am not ready to have this discussion tonight that is going to be helpful to anyone, especially to me, because I haven't read them. And also to bring a second reading in December, it's way too soon and unreasonable for me. It's hundreds and hundreds, thousands of pages. So I, I am not ready to have that discussion tonight. It, it will take more time for me to do my due diligence.
Well, I, I do want to respond to with regards to, to the process. The purpose of this discussion is to get through that, and it's not the expectation just because it's here that that necessarily is going to be a second reading, right? Again, we have to, we've got to come to some compromise or we're going to be stuck doing this for quite some time. Work is, and I respect that, I'm in the same place of, I want to prove something I don't really know, but perhaps there's some compromise that we can do to meet the fact that, that we have not had any, any, you know, policies changed to that level. So we've got to get to a certain level of, of comfort. But the whole purpose of this conversation is to say in this first reading, is this where we want to go? Is there a compromise, uh, in terms of, the, the compromise more time, whatever the case may be? Is there something that staff can do to help, you know, alleviate some of the concerns about, I'm not sure, you know, what was there and what wasn't. So, but I just want us to be mindful of the whole process and that we're dealing with something that got kicked down the road. So I'm just saying, and we're at the road. So I just want us to keep us moving forward on that. So Ms. Minos?
I know, Hilda, no, go ahead.
Hi, good, uh, good evening. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of points on the process side. When we were guided through this process by the CSBA rep, at the very start, there was clarification that some of CSBA's language was not up for debate, because it was getting us in line with current law. We couldn't even edit those sections. So that was off the table for us. In some of the instances where we recommended to keep SB Unified policy, it was because the last time CSBA had updated their policy was further back than when our district had done a revision, which meant that we already had the current legal background and we just wanted to update something that was personalized to our district. So we can find out whether CSBA can give us that kind of, um, what we recommended versus keeping our own versus theirs. But that was a lot of the process work to make sure that we cleaned up the backlog of policies that were not legally up to date. So I hope that clarifies.
Yeah, no, that's, that's helpful. And I think that, oh, sorry? Oh, okay. No, that's okay. Um, yes, I think, you know, that's very, that's helpful. And then also, you know, I appreciate, um, Mr. Banning's familiarity with the CSBA policy. Um, and any way that we can just go ahead and, and start working on this would, you know, I'd be interested in that.
Can I, uh, the last thing I want to do is keep us here longer, but I, and, and I'm, I, I guess we're going to have plenty of opportunity to talk about this. But one of the things that it's important to recognize is when you start to look through these, there are hundreds of policies that you will never need to read, ever. The purpose of these kind of policy manuals is legal compliance and not just compliance, but taking a subject and taking the ed code, the government code, the this code, the that code, and putting them all in one place. So there is a reference that when a particular issue comes up where there is legal or ethical, um, responsibility for the board and the district to act properly, that we can go to one place and read everything that is together that defines that. That's the real rule here. Policy themselves, there's thousands of them in here. I mean, you look at the four thousands alone. There's, there's three sets of them, one for management, one for classified and one for certificated. And half of them say exactly the same thing. Um, it's a ridiculously encyclopedic amount of information that is really a reference more than it is truly the way we do things around here. The policy is really more about law.
Ms. Alvarez?
Dr. Malinato, um, to, uh, expand on what Mr. Shetler say, would it be possible to get from CSBA a highlight or that shows, okay, this is SB Unified? Because I imagine that's a lot less than what's from CSBA. Because, uh, what, what was mentioned is that most of it is CSBA, which I would imagine the legal requirements. And some of it is what we have changed. How as a board will we know which one is which?
I'm actually going to turn to Sandra, because I did have a reach out to Greg. Do you recall what he mentioned about procedurally, how he could get that back from us? Otherwise, I, you know, we, go ahead.
The board policies that we kept that were Santa Barbara Unified were board policies you've already approved. So it wasn't new language. It just said, keep the ones the board have already approved, instead of updating it to the CSBA's. So it isn't a new, it's already come through this process.
Can that be shown? Can you highlight? They said, okay, you already, we already approved all the blue. We don't need to read the blue, for example, if you highlighted. Or is that just not possible?
That's not exactly how the software works.
So it's not possible.
I, I, I really want to acknowledge the board's, um, anxiety and stress I've caused by sharing it this way and, and maybe your anticipation of the item when we brought it was slightly different. So I, I want to acknowledge and, and say that, you know, I apologize that it came to you in a way that it makes it feel like you're responsible for thousands and thousands of pages. I trust that our cabinet members, whose job it is to actually go through these, pour over through these, tell us when they're updated or not, and to actually enact, as, uh, Mr. Banning said, when we actually need to go to guidance for an issue, that's, that's, that's areas of expertise. And that was, uh, that was the exercise was for them. I mean, it was all of us. It was a, a whole team of us going through them. I can try to reach out to CSBA again for the, uh, the ask that you're making, but I just want to reiterate the, the software we bought, the purpose was actually quite different. So it was not intended to do it in the way that you're asking. What I will do is sit with cabinet and, uh, we'll discuss it in our meeting tomorrow and work through what it is that we can do. I probably should have just gone through the PowerPoint, because we did have some highlights.
You're going to get the same pitch later.
At this point, but you know, I can definitely bring some of that. What I would like this, uh, direction from Board President is, would you like us to skip the December meeting and bring it in January to give, uh, board members more time? The second reading is the second reading. If you decide that, you know, we can present at the December meeting, then you can ask more questions. You don't have to take an action. You can take the action in January, once we've given an option for you to hear us out on some of the, the keep and change language that you're asking for, for the highlighted, it's going to be highlighted. It, there, there's no way it could be every single one. I just cannot make that commitment to you at this point.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, again, this is all part of compromising, you know, uh, to make sure that we are addressing concerns on the board. It's, that is a responsibility of the board. And I can appreciate also the efficiency side of trying to get us caught up. I, I would say January, and I only say that because you've got to have time to discuss it and what it, to give you more time, because I know you've got already a lot, a lot of things on your plate right now that are urgent, that are coming up for December. So I would say, you know, to back to the board, if we bring this back as a first reading with some of the comments that we've asked this and given staff time to do. It would be a first, right? Because we're going to see if we can make some highlighted changes so that it makes sense where we can kind of know. So maybe the first one coming back in, in January. I don't know if coming back in January, you know, uh, impacts any timelines that you may have.
We'll just have to look through the governance calendar and push some items out like we're doing tonight with the student outcomes report and so on. So I'll probably have to redo the governance calendar items.
Okay.
Just want to clarify. I'm more interested in substantial changes. So it's not like every single small change to be in alignment. It's just, were there any substantial changes from previous policy to now? That would be very helpful for me. Because I'm not going to, I, I tried, I gave it a sincere try on a couple of these and it's very difficult to pick out. Mr. Nada?
The only place where we may have an issue on pushing further out in time is that some of these board policies need to be updated and approved. of these board policies need to be updated and approved for FPM. And as, as FPM is the, the state audit that's coming, and they are already asking for some of our board policies. So if we could have, you know, that's where we may run into some issues. If they are not already approved, and they are looking for those corrections in board policy that are up to date, we may be in trouble.
Okay, good point. Ms. Ms. Munoz, and then Ms. Alvarez, and then Mr. Banning.
No, good point, in terms of prioritizing, and just in terms of the earlier comments, I don't want to create, you know, unnecessary work for the cabinet, just for the sake of us to review it, so that it is more, as Mr. Escobedo said, like the substantial changes, and also have us being, you know, prepared for the state audits. So thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Ms. Alvarez.
That was one comment, if there's any priority that needs to be given, Ms. Hernandez, are you talking about the 1,000s, the 2,000s, which ones would you say that are the priorities, so that those could be focused on first?
I can go back and look.
Would you?
Our internal auditor has been collecting some of those requests, so I can go back and look, I think some of them were the 1,000s already that she had asked for, but I'll, I can let you know.
So definitely, in my, my suggestion would be, that would be given a priority.
Okay.
Mr. Banning.
There, there are some policies that, in and of them, the law that, that requires them, that requires them to be reviewed and approved on an annual basis, and they're not just in any one section in the 2,000s or 4,000s, they're scattered throughout the thing. I, I would just ask that if the board step back and consider something like this to be the equivalent of adopting a curriculum, we don't read every page of every book. We take the work of the staff and the teachers and the community that's looked at these, and this maybe feels very different, because they're called board policies, so we have a sense of ownership with them. But I just, I can't really, this is a place where my personal experience doesn't help you. It's, it's an incredibly complex bit of work that is truly more like buying an encyclopedia than it is deciding how we're going to do things. I've said the same thing two times, I don't need to say it again.
All right, Mr. Escobedo, and then we're going to move forward on this item. Are you good?
Yeah, I would just say that my only rebuttal would be, I, oftentimes will be deferential to staff expertise. The, the reason why this is such a sticking point for me is because I've been told times in the past that, well, that's not board policy, and then I have to look up board policy. And so I'm being held to an expectation myself about board, board policy, that I would like to know what the expectations are. And this has happened again with the inter-district transfer policy. So for those in particular, of course, that's going to be a highlight for me, but I want to know what substantially is different from previous, so that I don't have these shifting goalposts, either for ourselves or for other interactions that we have as board members. So.
Okay, so I'm going to summarize here.
My cards are on the table.
So we can move forward with this. So it sounds like what we're asking for, prioritization depending on deadlines and timelines, and that staff is going to, cabinet, it's not staff, cabinet is going to discuss tomorrow, or during your cabinet, what is the highlighted, the substantial changes, they're going to be, figure out how best to do that, and they're going to know how best to do that, because they just went through that process. It's going to come back with those changes and direction we've given tonight, it's coming back in, I guess it would be discussed tomorrow, how quickly you could come, come back, so I'm saying January, but you might need to come back sooner due to prioritization, and maybe only bringing those back in January for approval or first reading, whatever, is those that are priority, and the second one's subsequent. Does that make sense?
I would just add that there may be some that we need to bring for December.
Okay, that, that's what I'm saying, so.
Once we determine that, yeah.
It won't be all of them that we're doing right now, we'll prioritize, give us time in giving your discussion tomorrow. Does that work for our cabinet? Yep, I see y'all, you know. So, and, and the board, we've got some compromise, how we move this forward. Okay. All right. With that, really making the errand disposition tonight, walking these shoes. So with that, are we pushing our 23, 24 for the next, we are pushing it?
So we'll, we are pulling the student outcomes report. Board members, you've received our student outcomes for the most part, but we did have some additional spring scores. I, I think, Madam President, I will work with you on agenda management, looking at governance calendar, and all the other reports that are coming, because we have several things to manage also in December.
And that may mean, we may need to change the time on our December meeting, so be mindful of that, too. So I know we twitched it today, because I know, Ms. Alvarez, you have a board meeting, I think we moved it to the Wednesday. Yeah, sorry, girl, you know, we moved our Wednesday, so, because I think you had a Tuesday conflict, so given all the things that we need to do, we may need to change or expand the time for the December meeting, just be mindful of that, board members. With that, okay, we don't have anything returned back, we just did. Coming events, coming events are on your agenda here, any ones that I, that are missing or not listed that we need to be aware of, other than having a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. Be safe and eat turkey, ham, chicken, whatever you do, you know, in terms of those pieces, be safe, safe travel out there. Future agenda items, I think we just kind of did some, we may rearrange that, so I think we're good with that. Yes, I'm going to do it. And then our, our next regular meeting is Wednesday, December 13th. It may change depending on how we work together on that. Yeah, starting time may change. With that, also, board members, we will adjourn this meeting to closed session, a short meeting for, for finishing up.